Good evening. Welcome to our April 15 city council meeting. My name is Rosario Diaz and I am your Centennial Mayor. Today's, it's seven o'clock and this meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez from Amazing Love Ministries and Mayor Pro Tem Tabatabai will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the freedoms that we so richly enjoy in our country. And Father, we pray that we will not take them for granted. And we thank you, Father, that in spite of the challenges that are facing our country, we're blessed to be citizens and residents of this country. And Father, we're blessed also to be residents of this city. Father, we pray for wisdom to all those that conduct business regarding our city this evening. Father, we pray the protection of your angels over our schools, that our schools will continue to stay safe in safe havens. We pray for the protection of our first responders and our police officers, Father. And Father, we thank you for the prosperity of our businesses. And Father, we just ask your blessing upon this meeting today and upon West Covina. The Lord bless you and keep you, West Covina. The Lord make his face shine upon you, lift up his cantons upon you, and grant you his shalom, peace. God bless America and God bless West Covina, in Jesus's name. Amen.
If you could all face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Out of the United Nations, to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Contos?
Here.
Councilman Wu?
Yep.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Tabatabai?
Present.
Mayor Diaz?
Here. Okay, today's closed session was canceled, so we're going to move on to presentations. I want to invite John Pinera from West Coast Arborist to the front. Arbor Day translates to Tree Day. It's a holiday that celebrates the planting, upkeep, and preservation of trees. For centuries, communities spanning the global have found various ways to honor nature and the environment. However, the appreciation of trees and forests in modern times can be largely attributed So today I have a proclamation, 2023 Arbor Day, and I want to present it to you. Would you like to say a few words?
You know, thank you for allowing us to be a part of the community and give back and, you know, be a part of Arbor Day. You know, it's a good day for the community, brings us all together. We had a great event last year and we're hoping to do the same thing again this Saturday, or next Saturday, the 29th.
Yes. Would you like to say a few words?
No. You're good.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, I have a quick question.
Oh, excuse me.
How many, how many tree going to donate to us this year?
Four twenty fours.
Four hundred twenty four trees?
It's a four at this point.
Only four trees?
Yeah, and it's going to be out here in the city hall.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on. Brian Gutierrez, can we have you come down? So this month is, we're celebrating Autism Awareness Month. Every April, Autism Speaks celebrates World Autism Month, beginning with the United Nations sanctioned World Autism Awareness Day on April 2nd. This year marks the 16th Annual World Autism Awareness Day. In 2023, the CDC reported that approximately 1 in 36 children in the U.S. is diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder. According to the 2020 data, boys are four times more likely to be diagnosed with autism than girls. Most children were still being diagnosed after age four, though autism can be reliably diagnosed as early as age two. Autism Response Team is an information line for autism community. Their team members are specially trained to provide personalized information and resources to people with autism and their families. For more information, please call 1-88-AUTISM-2. We'd like to thank Mr. Gutierrez for all the work in supporting autism awareness and proclaim the month of April National Autism Month. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Sure. Well, thank you for having me today. It's an honor to be here and I would like to say to anyone watching at home or who's here who knows someone with autism or who's a parent or guardian of a person who has autism, that regardless where one person comes from in life, that they can achieve if you give them the resources they need. And for our parents or caregivers and those who know someone, sometimes it may be challenging teaching a child who has autism, the many skills they need to be successful in life. But do know that you are making a change and one day it could pay off and that you're an inspiration to myself, inspiration to our mayor and to our city and throughout the whole state of California. And so I thank the mayor for creating autism awareness in our city and the many stories I've heard of others who have autism as well. And that no, regardless, again, regardless where one person comes from in life, we can all achieve if you believe in yourselves, as the impossible is always possible. And I'd like to present some awards too afterwards.
And this is to recognize you for all the work that you've been providing.
And so if the mayor doesn't mind, I would like to also call down Councilmember Wu and Councilmember Leti Lopez Viado to come get an award. And so, so it's my honor to present to you the President's Lifetime Achievement Award. It's given to various leaders, community service organizations, and leaders in our community who have served the community for over 4,000 hours. And so it's a, it's a great honor to recognize and present this to you three for always supporting autism awareness and being a voice for those who have no voice in our community. And so it's, the Lifetime Achievement Award. We're grateful recognition. The mayor corps and office of the President of the United States honors Mayor Rosario Diaz with the President's Lifetime Achievement Award for their lifelong commitment to the building a stronger nation through the volunteer service, President Joseph R. Biden Jr. As well for Councilmember Tony Wu. And Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viado. And so I get to put these medals on you. You can take them off and you go back up. Yes. And so those are your recognitions and thank you. You get a little challenge coin as well, what comes with this, for the Lifetime Achievement Award. And thank you again for being a voice, again, for those who have no voice in our community and your inspiration to the autism community. And may your voice continue to carry on through our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
I have 12 speakers, slips in there.
Okay. If you're interested in speaking, please fill out one of the yellow cards so we can move on.
Mike Greenspan, followed by Herman, followed by Kathy Clark. Herman, followed by Kathy Clark, followed by John Shoemaker.
Well, everyone, we know there was an incident here regarding a flag, right? Wasn't there an incident here regarding a flag? And it seems and it's very apparent that the mayor favored certain people and targets others, especially Mr. Mario Luis S.O.B.A.L.V.A.R.R.O. for the record. Because when he attacked Mr. Greenspan that night and basically almost killed the gentleman, I want you to be in the understanding of what free speech and the First Amendment's all about. It's a civil liberty of your civil rights. It's a constitutional rights, although Mommy Leti may not agree with me because she's from the hood of Boyle Heights where she works. She don't know any better. But see, homegrown Californian guy like me, simple boy, simple town, shows people a different world about the First Amendment. And I don't use vulgarity to entertain you. I use it because I'm exercising my First Amendment based on court cases from the Superior Courts. Matter of fact, I'm going to institute the Baghdazarian versus the United States into the record because I believe the mayor, the mayor there wants to know about why Mr. Herman stirs you people up to keep coming back to meetings. And in the United States versus Baghdazarian, I won't read it into the record because Mommy there will turn off the mic, censor me, and none of you will understand what I'm trying to speak about because there's no closed caption, another violation of our civil rights under, it's called, a disability. And here you are talking about autism? Mommy, please, where's closed caption for the autistic kids that are not verbal but are like myself, like to read shit? Why? So here's one of them regarding Baghdazarian and the United States. And then you of course heard it over and over repeatedly because I suffer from autism. I say the same thing over and over about, you know, Brandenburg versus Ohio, for the record. And then, not to offend anybody, but we all know who Hilda Solis is, right? We do. That's in for the record. Matter of fact, I'm submitting the Janet Han meeting from this morning because she kicked me out simply for using a term, blank, 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 under Brandenburg versus Ohio, U.S. 395, 444, 1969. A privilege, a right by the Supreme Court to use a language. And yet I am being at fault for exercising-
Address the council, please. Address the council.
I'm addressing the world. Doesn't the world evolve around me when I have the podium? It should, because if not, I brought even this one from, from Los Angeles, large print. And I won't read what it says, but technically, Mommy-
Address the council.
...message. It has the same, I was in Los Angeles and even there, a woman attacked me in the rotunda, a protected place of free speech. I was exercising my right, simply walking around in a circle like this for two hours, and she attacked me. And you know why she attacked me? Because she doesn't understand. The same way you allowed Mr. Mario Luis, for the record, by the name of S.O.B.A.L.V.A.R.R.O., Sobalavaro, to come in here and attack Mr. Greenspan. And you allowed it because you could have prevented that by telling the public the difference between free speech and an assault. That was an assault. That was definitely an assault. Matter of fact, I'm going to be talking to an attorney with Mr. Greenspan tomorrow about this assault. Not to, not to scaring anyone, but it's just to put it on record, to reflect the ideologies of the mayor who believes that her privileged right to censor us is her right. And you have no rights, you have no beliefs, you're just a bunch of cockroaches. And I could prove that because Mark Ridley Thomas is a cockroach. That's why he was, had those seven criminal figures against him. And then I go into a victim's-
Thank you.
Kathy Clark, followed by John Shoemaker, followed by Chris Miller.
For the record.
City Clerk, Assistant City Clerk.
Excuse me, young lady. Let me, let me remove my items here as I gently walk away. Please don't insult us like that, man.
This is my five minutes, not yours. I came and I was shocked by, by the presentation here. I'm sorry that I didn't get my card in sooner, but it's too bad that this is what, you know, we have to allow. But what I came for was, my name is Kathy Clark and I'm a resident of West Covina for 25 years, and I'm on the board of this Historical Society of West Covina. And in that capacity, I came to thank the West Covina Police Department. Because at our meet and greet that we have every month, Captain Kenny Plunkett was there and he gave an amazing presentation of the goals and the accomplishments of the police department. And so, and it was very well received because we had many community leaders there. And when I contacted Chief Bell, he didn't hesitate, he couldn't be there, but immediately I got a call from Captain Kenny right away. So I want to thank them for that. We have the finest police department around and that's what I came to say, not to witness this man's lunacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Shoemaker, followed by Chris Miller, followed by Elsie Messman.
You know, our first speaker was right, that he has a right to say anything he wants to, but it doesn't mean there's a requirement that you say anything you want to. There's ways of putting things to get your point across. You know, I have succeeded in making comments about Vladimir Wootson over here without having to say the exact words, but everybody knew what the words were. You know, it's pretty straightforward and pretty simple. The last speaker, I agree with 95% about our department. It's that 5% that's the problem. One of the things too is, keep looking at what goes on in this city. And do you guys just by accident misplace priorities? You know, a few years ago, we had a city manager who was talking about how we were going to get over the next 10 years, something like $20 million in funds for the road. And he wanted to spend it all, as did Councilmember Wu, to put in a 10 by 160 foot piece of grass on Glendora Avenue. For some reason, you know, I don't know what happened, but Mr. Wu actually thought about it and goes, oh, that's not too good of a way to spend our money. You know, he went, wow, you know, he had a certain position, listened to it and changed, which was absolutely amazing. Then somehow he became mayor and he thought that was a royal title. You know, it's, it's what, you know, that he had to be the center of attention on everything. I mean, even something as simple as the official picture of the city council, is the mayor front and center where the mayor is supposed to be? No. Not at all. That shows a lack of respect, either for the person or and/or the position. You don't do that. You know, but then he seems to have a tendency, because I remember one time being here and he called up, the West Covina School Board was here, and he calls up a board member when the president of the board was attending. He didn't like the president of the board, so he ignored her. Ignored her. Notice some consistencies here? Her, her, her. You know, you have to wonder about that. You know, I said, I said a while back that I was going to run for city council. One of the reasons I'm running for, I can be the biggest jerk in the world, wholeheartedly admit that. And I don't want to use the words that he would probably use, but you get the idea. But I was talking to a friend of mine who's known me for 55 years. And there was an issue in the family and he goes, John, I've known you for 55 years. No matter what you say or do or how you react, when it comes right down to it, you're going to do what's right. So who's, you know, those of you who, that I will serve with, you can be guaranteed one thing. I might not like you personally, or I might like you personally and don't like you politically. But a good idea is a good idea. No matter where it comes from and it gets things resolved. You can also, the public can also be assured that I won't sit up here silent and let things go. You know, an idea comes up, you know, we need to do something. Where's the analysis we promised the state of California? Because it's over $75,000. The priorities of spending will be towards the people in our city, not spending, I don't know how much, to put a little monument up off of Azusa, south of the freeway, when right next to it, the road is damaged. Now to me, let's fix the road, not put a sign up. Those are the types of priorities you need to have. But then when you do that, it means you care about the public, you care about the city, you care about what the results are. You know, tonight there's going to be the discussion about off-street parking. If it isn't to raise money and you want to pass it, make the fine $1. You complied, but you're not harming the public. Because after all, you guys are approving all these housing units that don't have sufficient parking on them. Thank you.
Chris Miller, followed by Elsie Messman, followed by Winwin Zong.
City Council, Mayor, city staff, city manager. Tonight, I want to talk about item three. You know, it's, it's unfortunate that we have a lot of expenditures we can't pay for, you know, such as overtime and other issues that are recurring item. But instead, the city's going down the route of basically squeezing blood out of turnips, its residents. I understand clean water and the need to street sweep, but you know, one of the things that are floating around is a ban on parking on a certain day throughout the city, which would be totally unfair to its residents. You know, people in apartment complexes, elderly that park in the alley, that maybe, you know, that park in their drive, in their garage in the alley, maybe they are fearful that they'll lose power and they'll get stuck. You know, there's various reasons why people park on the street on a daily basis. At the very least, we need to have, let's say Tuesday is one side of the street, Thursday is another side of the street. I think that's a fair and equitable way, rather than, you know, from what I've heard from residents, code enforcement showing up at seven o'clock in areas that don't have parking and ticketing gardeners because they're doing their job. You know, is the street sweeper even there? It's, to me, it's just a money grab and trying to go after people. You know, if we really want to look at clean water, sorry, Mike Cressby, I'm going to bring this up, but we just had this last year, our pumping station at Vincent flood. Why? Lack of service. It was filled with mud and muck over the last who knows how many years because the maintenance is just basically check a box, maybe witness what you're seeing, but there's no true actual maintenance. And guess what? All the trash and debris, there's nothing that was catching it, going pumping right through our storm drains to San Gero River. So, you know, perhaps we should start there for clean water instead of squeezing our residents. But, you know, I agree, I see areas where there's cars parked, never moved, and possibly it would be, you know, good to move it. I used to live in Pasadena, which was a pain in the ass when you had people over and there was no overnight parking. We're not even talking about that. We're talking during the day when people, you know, may have, may or may not have their car to move. And when you have the non-ability to park on the street, one side or the other, it becomes a real pain for residents. So I would consider having it, at least if you're going to do it, have it one day, say Tuesday, one side of the street, and Thursday, the other. Thank you.
Elsie Messman, followed by Winwin Zong, followed by George Nguyen.
Good evening, everyone that's here tonight and at home. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina. Last month, I brought up the fact that the Discover West Covina magazine was late. February was the last month reported. Now March and half of April is gone and still no magazine. Why is it that the residents can't get a magazine ahead of time to know what's taking place in the city? The banner that they put up on the street, it costs between $2,000 and $3,000, isn't worth nothing because it doesn't get the job done. Also, last month, I reported that one of our employees was terminated but settled for $55,000. I failed to report that our attorney got another $10,000, almost, excuse me, $10,000, for his services, bringing the total close to $65,000. A lot of potholes in Graviti could have been taken care of for that $65,000. This council or staff apparently do not know what they can do and what they can't. The lawsuit, it's costing the city a lot, all these lawsuits are costing the city a lot of money. And whoever is doing it, should, that is terminating these people, should be accountable to the city and to the residents here, because we're paying a lot of money for this. Article three is for street cleaning. Every week should be debated by the residents and not staff. A special meeting should be held and put in supposedly the Discover West Covina to inform all residents. I remember, I remember a year, a year ago, not a year ago, a few years ago, I went to a meeting to see what we could do because the street sweeper was cleaning the middle of the street, which wasn't getting the job done. After paying $50 to the city, they sent all residents in the area, in our tract, to either approve or disapprove of it. Some streets said yes and some said no. To get your- To get your street cleaned, 50% of the residents had to approve it. I also requested that cleaning the streets from 9 till 3, to give time for residents to go to work or go to school. Nationwide environmental services charges a city $53,377 a month for these services, and we only get cleaning twice a month in the residential area. And the city pays for the water and the trash disposal. And by the way, where are we going to get the money to pay for this? Has anybody thought of it? You know, you people up here aren't going to be up here forever, and this will be going on forever. You've got to stop and think about what the future holds for you. The rate that everybody's not, a lot of people, I should say, are hurting, and it's time that you took that into consideration. And also, could we get an update on the health department, the cost? And at the next meeting, I think a lot of people that don't want it, but they need answers, because nobody has said anything, and it's been going on for two years. You've got to remember that the city is going, that, excuse me, that money does not grow on trees, okay? Thank you very much.
Wenwen Zhang, followed by George Wen, followed by Sue Agino.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, city council members, and everyone. I'm Wenwen Zhang, West Covina Library Manager. West Covina Library will host another vaccine clinics next Friday, I mean, the following Friday, April 28th, in the morning, 10 to 12, 10 to 12. And nurses from the LA County Department of Public Health will provide the free flu shots and the vaccines, COVID-19 vaccines and boosters for people ages six months and older. And all is free, and no health insurance required, and no registration is required also, just first come, first served. I also wanted to mention that West Covina Library provide the free take-home COVID-19 test kits. For anyone who needs it, please call the library for pickup at the sidewalk service Tuesday to Saturday. West Covina Library remains closed right now, undergoing a major renovation and construction project. And we currently provide sidewalk service and to, you know, to pick up materials on hold and telephone support Tuesdays through Saturdays. Staff can be reached at 626-962-3541, call the library. We're happy to assist you. And a customer can also return a bottle of materials at bookshops in front of the library. For in-person services, in-person library services available at the neighboring Bowery Park Library and the Sun Kit Library. And we are very sorry for the inconvenience of our library closure, and we are working toward a reopening late this year. We, we are, you know, there's so many things going on. We are looking forward to serving our community in a much upgraded library space. Thank you.
George Wen, followed by Sue Agino, followed by Jim Grivitch.
Good evening, Councilman, uh, Councilman Larry Lopez Viado, Councilman Tony Wu, Councilman Ali Cantos, Mayor Pro Tem Brian Tabatabai, and Mayor Rosario Diaz. It's an honor to see you guys here today. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll be here to speak about four different things. I hope I have enough time, thankful for five minutes. The first thing I have here is, we are doing a fundraiser for the lady who, the elderly lady who lost her house about a month ago. She was a resident, she is a resident here for, for the past 40 years, and she's, didn't have fire insurance, no matter what the reason, you know, we're a community. I think it's important, no matter, you know, how we feel about each other, political or whatever reasons, everybody's welcome. The tickets are $35. It includes smoked ribs, smoked pulled pork, you have a choice of chicken, and some other sides. I'd like to thank Taro for creating this event. He's the one who, who is the one who's creating, who's going to be smoking all the food. Norma Tolliver, she's doing all the baskets and collecting all the, she's making a lot of sales on this, she's playing a big part in this. Philip Escalante, he's actually going to be providing the band for the first half, he's donating his time for this. And Janice Pan, she was able to, she has J-Pan Realty, she was able to have the tickets, print all the tickets, and was able to get her friends to sponsor that. So it's, it's all just a community fundraiser. If you are interested in purchasing the tickets, I have some here tonight, they're $35 each, I have flyers. You can purchase the tickets at my place of business at Ballon Fine Jewelry, 115 North Citrus, or also at Azovina, Azovino, sorry, 678 South Citrus, Covina, which is the place of the event. So the second thing I have is our city parks. This is feedback from the community and personal experience. So the city of Walnut, to rent out their cabana, they don't charge any fee, but you must be a Walnut resident, which is my favorite one. Covina, you don't have to be a Covina resident, but there's also no charge to rent out the cabanas. Ballon Park, they charge $150 deposit, but deposit is returned if you leave the park clean. La Puente, they charge $10 to $20 an hour, depending on the size of the cabana, but there's no refund. However, here in West Covina, we're charging $250 non-refundable fee. So I'm hoping that's something that you guys can look into, maybe reconsider, you know, because as we already know, we have a lot of unwanted people at the parks, so maybe if we fill our parks with our people, you know, it'll maybe deter these people. And we can actually enjoy our own parks. The second thing, I mean, sorry, the third thing is the Arco Gas Station on the corner of Azusa and Workman. We all know that they have the best gas prices in West Covina. However, a lot of people from the community are afraid to go there, because there's always either fistfights, or arguments, confrontations. The last time I was there, you know, there was a guy who actually, I seen it happen, he actually cut in front of a pregnant lady when she was pulling in, and unfortunately, she took matters in her own hands and, you know, was throwing water at him, and he actually came to fistfight her. So thankfully, me and another guy was there to stop it. So hopefully, we can consult with the owners of this gas station, maybe they can put a concept, something like maybe Costco, or In-N-Out, where they're controlling their traffic. It's also causing traffic problems on Azusa and Workman during all hours of the day. The last thing I have, good, I have more time, so. The last thing I have is the streetlights on Grand, coming from, coming from Cameron, going up to the top of the hill, going towards Mount Sac College. So on the east side, between Cameron and Hillside, the east side has no lighting, but the west side does, but between Hillside and where it says Welcome to Walnut, there's absolutely no lighting there. So my concern, and the community's concern, is if somebody gets stranded, or if lost animals, it's a safety concern, so. All right? Thank you.
Mayor? George, thank you. Sue Agino, followed by Jim Grivitch, followed by Jerry Pachas.
Sorry, Mayor, I just had a quick question for, for him.
George?
A quick question, sorry, in regards to this. Two questions, quick. Would Janice be there at this fundraiser?
Yes, she will.
Okay. And the second question is if they want to purchase and they can't make it to these location in person, are they able to purchase the tickets online, or Zelle, or Venmo you, or anything?
Um, I believe Norma Tavilar, she has a Venmo account that you can work with her on. You can always reach out to her, she has a Facebook account. If, you can always reach out to me at westcovinabuzz@gmail.com if you have any information.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
I want to thank you all for allowing me this time to come before you. My name is Sue Agino, and I've been a lifelong resident of the city of West Covina, and I run a social media site called West Covina Residents Take Your Neighborhoods Back. Been about seven years now, I think, and growing. But I come to you tonight with the conversation, I want to open a conversation about the street sweeping. I personally am for, for it. I just think that, I'm, I'm reading all of the social media sites, and there's a lot of confusion as to how the path is going to go. I think that people are worried about the transparency of it, and the path, the transparency and the path. And I think that needs to be an open door, and have every step of it have the involvement of the citizens, the residents, because they need their input, because every single person has a different situation. Whether, I don't have a problem on my street. My street sweeper comes, I have my trash days on Friday, my street sweeper comes on Monday, every other Monday, it's not a problem. Every once in a while, you know, cars won't get moved and they go around them, and okay, I don't have that problem. Some streets, I mean, I walked a campaign, an at-large campaign for the city of West Covina, and I walked 17 square miles of this, and I've seen some horrific stuff. And I mean, there was times when I was walking with my phone, and we were reporting things, cars didn't have tags, it was obvious, there was trash piled underneath them. There was a lot of different situations that need to be looked at. And do I think that we need to have it? Absolutely. It's going to take dead cars off the streets, it's going to have, it's going to be able to have our code enforcement target these problem areas, it's going to be able to clean our street, our storm drains, which are horrible. The storm drains, and remember, that all goes down to the beach, that's what our kids are going to be swimming in. We have to be some kind of stewards of our neighborhood. And I, and I did a little research, too, and I, finding out that West Covina is the only city in the San Gabriel Valley that doesn't have some type of program. Now, what that program is going to look like for us, it's not going to be the same as everybody else, because everybody else has their different situations. But I do hope that it is an open forum, and every step of the way is an open forum. And another thing, too, and I'll just be real brief, is our homeless situation. I watched last week when you guys did the Locata contract. I'm out there. I see it. I've seen the same ones that have been on the streets for the last six years, that will not take help, and they eat up our resources, and they're destroying our homes, they're destroying our neighborhoods, and with no regard, they don't care. And they, and they're not going to change. And Locata just does not have the ability that they say to put these people into homes. Real quick, two, they said, they, there was a family there, a husband and wife, and they had three dogs. They had to get rid of one of their dogs to be able to be eligible to go into the housing Locata had said that they were going to provide for them. They were to meet at the McDonald's to find out what this housing was going to be. When Locata got there, the guy says, "Oh, I don't know about that. Let me see what I can do, let me see what I can find for you." No, these people have already been waiting two weeks to meet you here, to find out where they're going. They'd already gotten rid of a dog to be able to meet the requirements. And then he said, "Well, you know what, I can send you over the hill to Lancaster, or you can go to downtown LA to Skid Row." Why would they leave here? Why would anybody go over the hill or go to, you know, LA? If those are the only options, I think that there are some big, deep cracks that Locata needs to fill. And I know that they service other cities, because they had said, "Hurry, we got to get to, we got to get to Azusa, we got to get to Azusa." These guys have been waiting for two weeks on the street. And another thing, too, is I want to say, I watch at home, and I think it's a shame. It is just a shame that we, as the city of West Covina, cannot do something to make the decorum of this meeting, something that our families can enjoy, something our kids can come and get their baseball things for. I mean, they shouldn't be able to come and see Batman and his boy penis, you know, I mean, it's just, it's horrible. And the decorum is horrible. And I think that there's something that we should be able to do about that, because he told me outside that kids do not belong in adult settings. This is their city. They belong here. They, they should be able to come and get their awards, without having to be offended by them, with their families. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Jim Grivitch, followed by Jerry Pachas, followed by Colleen Rozati.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to, I guess, act in my role that I've described before as a consultant for the council, a little bit different, as opposed to an advocate. I found the item number three that had to do with street sweeping very poorly written, and I, I can read, but I couldn't figure out what the, what was happening. Was it a proposal? Or was it already going to be implemented without council action? It was not clear. Was it going to spend a million dollars more without any funding indicated? That's what it looked like. Where's the money coming from? And as has already been mentioned, there's a lot of issues with street parking. I'll just give you my personal one. My wife is totally disabled. We have caregivers come to our house every single day to provide various services. Where are they supposed to park? And we're not alone, there's a lot of people in that situation. Other people have emergency plumbing problems, other kinds of maintenance issues. What are they supposed to do? There's nothing, and that isn't even mentioned in the study. I do know that in other cities, it's possible to get exemption permits for providers, but apparently it hasn't even been considered by the city of West Covina. And I'm, there's lots of things left out. You know, there was a point about, well, we'll have community meetings to tell you that we're going to do this. Well, what's that? One lady mentioned that perhaps you might consider resident input. I'm not real fond of the city restricting parking. And why? Because in the bottom, the real analysis of it, it's actually just tax. Because what happens with, with it is, oh, we can give you a permit, it only costs $50 a year, the first year, but a hundred and a hundred and fifty later. And when you tax everybody that kind of money, all of a sudden, you got a few million extra. And that's how it becomes, I'm very familiar with the city of Los Angeles, where parking is apparently deliberately rare, and maximizes city revenue, they, they charge a fortune for people to park, the city charges. So I, I'm just, I'm just concerned, because all of this is missing. The, the written document as presented doesn't really address, I think, a lot of serious issues. And the most serious issue is, is the council adopting this as a policy? Why isn't it on the agenda that way? If this is just something staff is doing on their own, and the council gets to look at it for information, I think it's totally wrong. The city council should be in charge of this city, not staff. And this is a major policy change. You should be the ones deciding if we should do it or not, not staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Pachas, followed by Colleen Rozati, followed by Steve Bennett.
Good evening. Jerry Pachas, West Covina resident, and I, too, am going to comment on item three. The process in the public sector isn't highly important, and I'm concerned, this is a very opaque rollout of a very major change to the residents, and that is a concern to me. I read the staff report several times, it's deficient, as previous speakers have said. When you roll something out in a opaque manner, you create a very negative attitude towards it by many residents. It's, doesn't look good. I would have preferred... towards it by many residents. It's, doesn't look good. I would have preferred to have seen it as a department item, a little presentation with council asking questions and a positive. This is a major change in the city. It's deserves more than receive and file. And oh, by the way, we'll have some community meetings. That's, this is a mistake on rollout. I am going to ask that you seriously take major steps to get community involvement in this. You don't know every street. Doesn't affect me. I'll let my neighbors park in my driveway. I can park six cars because I've got an old house with a garage in the back. It, that's not the point. What time people go to work? You have ADUs without parking now coming in. We have areas that had no parking on the street and now in the daytime there's five and six cars. People work at home. And you're doing a receive and file? Please. I'm asking that you set up multiple community meetings. Do more than put things on Facebook. Um, use utility bill messaging when you have meetings. Do everything you can. How about even an ad on the Tribune or stuff? Really work at getting the word out. We used to have community meetings that I would go to and there'd be 30 and 40 people at those meetings. Not five and 10. Please change the rollout. Thank you.
Colleen Rosati, followed by Steve Bennett, followed by Mr. G.
Good evening, Colleen Rosati. Tonight I'm here as the president of West Covina Beautiful. And I just wanted to let the community know that we will be holding our annual Arbor Day event. We've been doing this for over four decades. I think this is possibly 47, excuse me. And part of the celebration is recognizing outstanding leaders in the community who have dedicated their lives to the betterment of the city. This year we'll be honoring former retired, uh, West Covina PD, Don Holtz, and also Dr. J. Kenneth Lund Rotarian. Don Holtz was also a planning commissioner for many, many years. He was a West Covina resident along with Kenneth Lund and will be planting a tree in their honor. Another tree will be our centennial tree and, um, a fourth tree for acknowledging 75 years for West Covina Beautiful. The event will take place on April 29th at 11 o'clock. It'll be here at City Hall, the upper terrace overlooking the city courtyard and right outside West Covina PD. So we encourage you all to come. We'll have vendors and it's a nice ceremony. One of the main purposes for the Arbor Day event put on by West Covina Beautiful is to keep West Covina a Tree City USA. And in order to do that, a nonprofit has to have a celebration, which we do, plant trees on Arbor Day, and that keeps the flag flying over City Hall and the little placards that you see throughout the city. And I think this is our 47th year, Tree City USA. We're also a sterling city, which there are very few nationwide. And that was done by Barbara Riley here at the city a couple of years ago. So we've got some acknowledgement that many cities don't have. So encourage you all to come out on the 29th of April, 11 o'clock, right here at City Hall, upper courtyard. We hope to see you then. Thank you.
Steve Bennett, followed by Mr. G, followed by Samuel Martinez.
Oh, I love seeing smiles when I walk up to the microphone from you, Brian. Um, evening, council, members of staff. So I'm going to beat the horse to death and talk about street sweeping. So you've heard from a bunch of people, uh, some of the issues. Ms. Potras was actually very eloquent in her thing of the rollout. I, I don't want to use the word rollout because I'm kind of hoping this isn't a rollout. I'm hoping it's a discussion item that's going to be carried over to the public so that we can have some meetings and figure out what's right. So I'm hoping it's not a rollout as it's stated, but she is correct. The, the optics of it are extremely terrible and are extremely opaque, as she put it. I thought that was a very well-worded statement. So here are some issues that I'm going to point out. Just on the way here to council tonight, I drove between Lark Ellen and Sunset on Workman Avenue. There are 18 homes that have either two parking spots or less in their driveway. Believe it or not, there are some that have a fence across their driveway where they probably couldn't even park in their driveway if they wanted to. So the question is, where will they park? Now, we're in a, a new world since COVID. A lot of people are working from home. A lot of people are working split shifts. A lot of people are working swing shift, graveyard shift, whatever it may be. And we're asking people to, uh, do additional things that they've never done before in a, in a world, uh, that has never been the case here in West Covina. And that is, not only are they working during the day, either at their home or away, but they've got to make sure their cars are off the street. And I think that's a burden on everyone. Mr. Grivitch mentioned the tax, and that's a, that's a nasty word for some people and it's a great word for others. That's basically what this is. You have cars that are left out there and they're going to be penalized for being out there. That is a tax in a roundabout way. That is going to hurt the people who have the smallest driveways in the city. I promise you, you go through, drive through South Hills, they don't have an issue with driveway space. Tony, I think you can fit, what, about 25 or 30 cars in your driveway, if I understand it correctly. Huge, huge property there. So I'm hoping you'll open it up to the residents. Um, some of us here can park two or three or four at most. I could only park two. So again, talking about size and, and equity. Um, ADUs, state made it so that we don't have to do off-street parking. A lot of people are building those to help the housing crisis. So I guess we're going to encourage them to help the housing crisis, but hey, don't park there. So which way are we going to have it, right? You can't have our cake and eat it too, as much as we would like to. So let's talk about what is actually going on. The state passed a law that says we've got to have cleaner storm water. Our city manager used to work in Seal Beach, if I remember correctly, right? And he will tell you that the water coming out in Seal Beach is not pleasant. I'm sure you'll shake your head to that. Yes. Um, and, and that's true. That is absolutely a fact. Cities need to do better for our children, like Ms. Agino over here said. We need to do better. There's filter opportunities in sewers and we can go ahead and look at options. It's not going to require and tax residents the way we're doing it with ticketing. There are options to block sewer drains with grates to prevent large debris from going in. Are we going to prevent small particle dirt like Chris Miller was talking about? Probably not. That's going to take a little different type of scenario. No street sweeper is going to prevent that either. We're not going to get runoff from mountains going down, being prevented by street sweeping. So the issue really comes down to, back to what Ms. Potras said, as I go full circle, it doesn't look like you guys have thought this out. Doesn't look like you've talked to the residents. Each of you, I'd be willing to bet, have a different idea on what you see happening. Even among the residents and among social media, we've had different discussions. My big question has always been, do you have parking problems in front of your house? The city has a mechanism to fix that. You've just got to apply for parking permits. And more than likely, if your residents have the same problem, you'll get parking permits. But does your problem need to affect 110,000 people? Because 10 people on your house or your street or an entire block have a problem? Does that warrant a change to 110,000 residents in the city? The answer is no, because the problem is local. If you have that problem, address it. I addressed it. I've got parking permits in front of my house for that specific reason. Been there for 20 years. Ironically, didn't solve the problem we put them in for, but we solved it in our own way and the best way we could without affecting 109,950 other people. Because that's how you're supposed to do it. You guys are the leaders and the stewards of this city right now. You're not going to be here forever. God help us, you're not going to be here forever. But the reality is, you are right now. And we ask you, you need to understand something. You were a resident before you were a council member. You'll be a resident when you're done. And while you may think it's a great idea now, and I understand Dave's thing, the city didn't mandate street sweeping, they mandated cleaner sewer water. Doesn't mean you have to sweep every week, and it doesn't mean you have to put restrictions in. There are other options that may cost less.
Mr. G, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Samuel Martinez.
Good evening, councilman and mayor. I'm going to put it simple. What works in West Covina? What's good about West Covina? That's why we live here. We don't want to live in the city of Los Angeles. Most people come from the city of Los Angeles, but they do not want to live like the city of Los Angeles or live like this Washington DC. They want quality of life, high standards, clean streets. Stop a second. Let's think about that. I've been in an area where people, their gardeners blow half the trash and leaves. Find the residents. Get that money there. So the gardeners, I've had to get my gardener from across the streets rake out of his car and his bucket and sweeped it in front of my house because he blows it in front of my house. That's what causes the backup. So if the resident is penalized for the lack of courteousness or protocol or behavior or decorum, they should be fined. The people that have multiple vehicles that aren't registered, and there are a lot of them, that's the issue. Now I want to stop and think. If you drive from one edge of West Covina down Cameron, there's only one place where you really have to stop. Citrus and Cameron. I walk my dog there every day and almost every day I almost get run over. I have had cars close enough that I can tap and I'm walking with a big dog. Enforce the laws. Because you can do 100 miles an hour from Grand to Baranca. Now I make that light and I come through Citrus. That's a, you're going through high schools, junior high schools, elementary schools. That's dangerous. There are runners, joggers. They put the sidewalk in 50 years ago to beautify that area. They stowed land for my family under eminent domain. What do I get now? A fee to pay for somebody to, because they want to have a parade, they want to help the homeless. I believe you said we've paid almost half a billion dollars in taxes. I may have the number wrong. We've paid more in taxes for homeless. It's, West Covina, we want to be known for fast driving homeless people. We spend, I believe, with $48,000 to some nonprofit organization that housed three people. They spend six hours a day driving around the city of West Covina, causing pollution and traffic. And they give out Happy Meals or what they call snacks. 329? We are better off, do what the state of California does to the US government or Hollister Sanctuary City. We're not going to pay the tax. We keep the tax. We fix the streets. We have places where kids can play. And if it's a three strikes, enforce the law, you have, everybody's welcome in the city of Beverly Hills, but you don't see homeless in the street. They let me walk through there. I remember, I actually know what it is to live behind the red line. I actually know what it is to be targeted. But I looked at it this way. Hey, at least they're stopping me, so they're stopping everybody. That way I can go walk peacefully in my street. Use the laws we have now or raise the standards. So Mr. Ali doesn't have to come to you and say, behave. And she won't have to not vote because you haven't promised him. Utilize what you have to the best of your ability for the best people, not what you want. Because I never heard anyone who wants to be inclusive, but yet it's always about them. Do the right thing for the overall citizens of West Covina and that's going to make us a, a great city. Thank you.
R. Robinson, followed by Samuel Martinez.
There was a congressional hearing today I watched, and I'm not going to be discussing bioweapons, which is what gain-of-function virus research is, or nanotechnology, or spike protein toxicity, or graphene oxide, or 5G non-ionizing radiation, or the, or the bio-warfare scheme that's, that's, uh, we've been experiencing in the last three years, novel ways to kill people. Instead, I got a different subject tonight. Uh, PR firms and ad agency holding companies are a central cog in the global propaganda machine. They make sure that the same message is distributed in many different places in a cohesively timed, a cohesively timed fashion. An estimated two-thirds to 80% of the content broadcast and published by corporate media comes from public relations firms, such as these four largest ad holding companies in the world, uh, which are Publis Group, WPP, the Omnicom Group, and the Interpublic Group. And all are deeply interlocked with the corporate media, the military-industrial complex, complex and policymakers. In other words, most so-called mainstream media news is propaganda. A handful of private investment companies dominate every aspect of our lives and own everything we spend our money on. Uh, the two largest ones are Vanguard and BlackRock. Vanguard and/or BlackRock are also among the top 10 shareholders in the largest ad agency holding companies I already listed. Uh, 1% of the world's wealthiest people provide the ideological justification that is driving the implementation of the Great Reset worldwide. The term academia uses to describe the globalist cabal, you know, the, the transnational capitalist class. This is capitalism in spades. Uh, the PR agency creates a global media plan for a given client. It decides the articles to be written and where they are, they're to appear. It then decides where ads will run and when. So while drug companies appear to have a rather direct influence over media, it is really the PR firms that wield the greatest control, especially when it comes to the organization of it all. Uh, they make sure the same message is distributed in many different places in a cohesively timed fashion. As such, PR companies are a central cog in the global, global propaganda machine and need to be understood as such. So, uh, this is about controlling competing views, propaganda and propagating unconstitutional surveillance and medical tyranny. And, uh, you're going to start hearing about the smart, uh, smart cities, the 15 minutes, 15-minute cities. Uh, maintaining, maintaining control over ideas and prevailing narratives involve both the monopolization of ideas and the simultaneous suppression of competing views. And PR companies and media, uh, media perform both functions. As noted by the author Stiles, even when a, uh, when media present, presents opposing views, they do so very carefully. Truth that is, the power to unseat the illusion of democracy will have a firewall erected around it. And media simply will not cross that firewall, no matter how neutral they pretend to be. Uh, so, uh, so we've been, we've been, uh, you know, there's the First Amendment in the Constitution. I don't care about political parties or, uh, all they care about is the, the Constitution. And, uh, we've been manipulated like dogs the last two or three years. And we have inalienable rights that are granted to us by God. It's stated in the Declaration of Independence. And, uh, uh, we, we need to, uh, enforce the laws and our rights and the Constitution.
Samuel Martinez.
And nullify what's, what we're putting up with right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Samuel Martinez, 35-year resident of the city. Mayor, Samuel Martinez, 35-year resident of the city. I'm in Councilman Cantos' district, but I've had a couple of people that, I've heard a couple of people today talk about the decorum of this, of these meetings. And I've talked about it before, and I'm here again. You know, I grew up in the innocence of the 50s and the turmoil of the 60s and the 70s. And back in those days, we respected our teachers, we loved and respected our police officers. When somebody gave us something, our parents always told us, "Cómo se dice?", which means, "What do you say?" And we were supposed to say, "Gracias", "Thank you." And I just wanted to talk about what happened to simple courtesies. My goodness, I love this city. I've been here a long time. And this gentleman behind me, he has no knowledge of what freedom of speech is, none whatsoever. He thinks he does, but he has no knowledge of it. What we need to do is get back to the simple courtesies of thank you, please, sorry. I'm reading a book right now, and that's the title of it. Sorry, please, and thank you. And those are so simple words, and yet things that, in our culture today, we need not to forget. I was here about a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, when Councilman Cantos, I don't remember the exact words he used, but something about toning it down. And he was talking specifically to you, sir. I never heard you answer him back, and maybe you have in closed doors, but he was making a request to toning it down. My God, we all need to tone it down. It is not a courtesy when something negative is said about my mayor or my city council, and people laugh behind, behind me. That's just not right. We need to remember, please, thank you. And if we have a complaint, we can say it in a right way. You know, the Apostle Peter wrote to couples, and he said, "Be courteous to one another." I wrote a book on parenting. I'm not here to make a commercial, but one of my chapters is, "Be courteous." And then the question that I ask is, "Do you have to tell Christians to be courteous?" Well, obviously, yes. Otherwise, Peter didn't put, would not put it in the Holy Scriptures. But somebody needs to get up, and I appreciate those two people who talked about the decorum. It's important. It's important because it doesn't make our city look good. And I was here about six weeks ago when there was the issue with land acknowledgement. I trust I'm using the right terminology. And there were 30, 35 people who got up here, you know, and certainly they were expressing their constitutional rights to speak. But I would like to see, I'm talking to the residents of the city. I'm not talking necessarily to the staff here or the council. I'm talking to my fellow citizens, and I'm saying, "I can't be here in two weeks, but man, in two weeks, I would love to have 30 people who get up and tell this fool to shut up." Now, I understand narcissism, and I understand that narcissistic people like to get attention, and he does. But nonetheless, we need to get up here, and we need to say, "This is our city, and we do not like what you're doing, and don't talk to us about constitutional rights, and don't talk to us about free speech, because what you're doing is obviously stupidity." Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I have no further speakers left, Mayor.
Thank you. City manager, can you address any other questions that the audience had?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council, and members of the public. Thank you all for being here tonight and for speaking. I'll try to just briefly respond to some of the comments that were made. Armando Herman talked about civil and constitutional rights, and we honor his and everyone's rights by affording them the time to speak at these meetings. Kathy Clark, thank you for the compliment to our police department and for that presentation that was given at the Historical Society. Chris Miller and seven other residents talked about item three tonight on your agenda, which is on there for two reasons. We want to raise this, it's a thought piece, as to what approaches this city might take with respect to keeping its streets clean and getting into regulatory compliance. The idea here is twofold. This would be the council's first look at this. I'd like you to consider it a thought piece. It asks you to receive and file this report. We've got a report ready for you tonight. If you'd like to just give us a brief overview, we can certainly do that. But the heart of the recommendation tonight is to refer it for broad public dissemination. Direct us to get the word out fully and to have some community forums and conversations on this topic, on a single topic, street sweeping. The idea here being that we would come back to council with a proposal that would then be centered on the desires of the residents that we might try to do better in this area. But again, when you get to that item on your agenda, if you'd like a report, we've got one ready to give you. Elsie Messman asked again, or I don't know if she's the one that asked last meeting, but the schedule for the Discover magazine is that we expect it to be in the mailboxes at the end of April. So that one's on its way. She made the point that she thought the streets cleaning should be debated by the residents. Couldn't agree more, absolutely. She asked for a report about the Health Department, which I can certainly tell you there's not much happening with that. We've been meeting every two or three weeks by Zoom meetings with the California Department of Public Health. They are still not in a place where they can publish regulations by which West Covina or any municipality could apply to get Health Department status. And until they do, though, until there's a public comment period, we won't know what those regulations are, or what, if any, Health Department of West Covina would be able to stand up. It may be a provisional approval initially, but we don't know which aspects would be considered approved by CDPH. Win-win. We always appreciate you coming and sharing what's available for library services. Thank you so much. George, you had asked about four things. Thank you for the info about the fundraiser. We'll get that out as we can. We're happy to take a look at park user fees. In fact, we're going to look at city fees holistically and comprehensively to include that one. But I take your point. We want our residents in our parks, and maybe we could find a way to do that better. We'll refer to the police for follow-up with the service area lieutenant about the fist fighting at ARCO. I hadn't heard about that one, so thank you for mentioning it. And then lastly, we will look into the question of those missing streetlights. Grand Avenue is not entirely within West Covina's jurisdiction, but we've got some commonality in terms of county, and we'll, we'll look into those questions as to how the streetlight might be improved. Street lighting might be improved. We could add some, or what the cost would be to do that, but let me, let me look into Sue Aguino talked about street sweeping, about homeless, and about civility, as did Samuel Martinez. I agree that the decorum of these meetings and civility is a major issue. Been working on a couple of policies. We did a survey of what other cities are doing in this regard. We've got a draft in place. The city attorney is going to review it. And then I'll return to the city council for your look at it, but it's not quite ready for you. We're, we're working on that one. I'd like to think that as a community, we could do a little better in this area. Colleen Rovzadi, thank you for the reminder about Arbor Day, April 29th. We're going to use here on the Civic Center campus to plant trees this year. And I think that's all I've got this evening. Thank you very much.
Councilman Wu.
Yeah, City Manager, I think Mr. Jeet asking about the traffic speeding on the Cameron from Grand to Baranca, and that is extremely dangerous because of curve. So maybe you can address that?
Through the chair, thank you. I did take that note, and I forgot to mention, I will refer those issues to the traffic engineer. I know we've got some traffic engineering solutions in the works. We had a community meeting just quite recently about the possibility of signalizing that intersection at Cameron and Citrus, and that'll come forward for council consideration in the pretty near future. But I will again forward these concerns to our traffic engineer. She's really good at what she does, and if there's any aspects of his comments that haven't already been considered by her and our traffic committee, I'll see to it that we do. Thank you. Just a couple of reports tonight, and get to the other portions of your agenda. First, I'd just like to say that we had a very pleasant dedication ceremony for the new post office in honor of Congressman Esteban Torres. The Congresswoman's office was in charge of that event, but the city stepped in and did its portion. It was just a very nice evening, or late morning event. The family was quite honored by it, and they sent their compliments. I wanted to pass those on to the city council. Just dedicating this thing in honor of our former congressman was very special. It was a nice day. I've got a couple of saved dates for community budget workshops. Wednesday, April 26th, beginning at 6:00 PM here in these chambers, and Monday, May 1st, beginning at 6:00 PM over at the Cameron Community Center. We really would invite the public to come, and in that informal setting, share their opinions and ask their questions. The coming year budget provides the big framework for the services that the city will providing and programs to the community for the coming year. It's a fiscally responsible plan. The municipal organization continues to make as its primary focus public safety and meeting infrastructure and regulatory requirements and providing excellent service to our residents. I really hope people will take the time to come to one or both of those budget workshops. Another saved date, the Cherry Blossom Festival is being done in conjunction with the Plaza West Covina. Free admission, April 22nd, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And I'd like to announce West Covina Small Business Week. We are bringing this back to celebrate West Covina small businesses. We're encouraging our business community to participate. We've got Julie Klaus, the SBA District Director, as a keynote speaker, and we hope people can come to the Business Expo on May the 3rd and to a mixer on Thursday, May the 4th. And that's all I've got this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Cantos.
Mr. City Manager, can you also remind the residents about the City of Hope Blood Drive tomorrow? I think it's at 11:00 at the Senior Center, but I don't know if you have that in front of you, but it's, it's an important community event.
Thank you for that reminder through the chair, if I may. They had to cancel for tomorrow, and we put out a cancellation on our social media, and I meant to mention it tonight in my manager's report and forgot. The blood mobile broke. And so they're going to get it rescheduled, but it's off calendar for tomorrow. So thank you, Councilman, for that reminder, because I meant to share that and forgot. It's not happening tomorrow. We'll get it rescheduled.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. Councilor, is there anything you'd like to pull?
I'd like to pull.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Cantos.
Number three, please.
That was the same agenda I was going to pull.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
All motion.
Okay. With the exception of 3, 6, and 9?
Second.
Okay.
I have a motion by Councilman Lopez Viado, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Tabatabai. Councilman, with the exception of items 3, 6, and 9. Councilman Cantos.
Aye.
Councilman Wu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Tabatabai.
Aye.
Mayor Diaz.
Aye.
Items pass, 5-0.
Councilman Cantos, go ahead.
Mr. City Manager, with regard to item number three with, relating to street sweeping, you've already described the process. I know that we are budgeted to spend roughly $2 million. So what was the, the process already in determining how that $2 million was, is it $2 million? $2 million? And how was it to be spent in terms of what are the line items within that?
Mayor, through the chair, if I may. We have a brief overview presentation prepared, a PowerPoint that we might answer, hopefully that question in addition to any others that the council might have tonight as we consider this item. John, if you would, please.
Oh, your mic.
Can you hear me now? Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Carmini, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight and speak to this item. I hear some of the comments that are made by the residents. Of course, it is an important issue to be discussed. But let's keep in mind that the last time that the city looked and evaluated the street sweeping program, which is an important service delivery model, was back in 2015. And it behooves us like any other important service that we provide to our residents, for us every once in a while to come back and evaluate it and see if there is any room for modifications or changes. Tonight, we are going to start the first step of that conversation, and it is going to be a conversation, because mostly it's going to be around dissemination of information and seeking public opinion and public input. The success of any program is to share data and make sure the data is going to drive the ultimate decision. And in this case, we have the same thing. It is not an exception tonight. We are going to share some information with you, and as we can see in the slides that you're going to be seeing in a minute or two, big emphasis is going to be on sharing the information with the members of the public first, gathering the information to learn about their desires, about their priorities, and how they think it is best for the city to deliver the service to them. And then based on that, gather that information with other data you need to have, bring it back before the city council to make a decision. That's what we are going to do. Next slide, please. Thank you. As you know, for many years, street sweeping has been done for aesthetic purposes, in order to clean the streets clean, sanitary, and safe, and also to comply with clean and clean air and clean water regulations. It is a public service focusing on collection of trash and debris, and as we suggested, compliance, because the Clean Water Act, particularly in Southern California, has been an evolving, ever-evolving issue that the municipalities had to deal with over the course of the years. And trash collection on the streets is a big component of that. We're going to touch a little bit about the general benefits of street sweeping for communities, and then we are going to explain some of the specific characteristics of the street sweeping program in the city of West Covina. And ultimately, I'm going to share with you just the framework of the conversation that I touched on just a minute ago. What are we going to do? How are we going to do that? How are we going to roll out the information? And how are we going to bring back that information to the city council? Debris tend to be deposited along roadway gutters. Removal of debris prevents loose material to enter the roadway, causing unsafe conditions for pedestrians and motorists. So creating clean roadways is one of the primary focuses of any viable street sweeping program. It also gives us the ability to protect the environment and also be compliant with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, regulations. It also helps us to have a tool for flood management. Debris tend to collect, tend to be collected in the gutters, and they can potentially block storm runoff and clog up catch basins. If catch basins get clogged up, our streets get flooded, and that could be causing severe implements to pedestrians and vehicles. It also prevents damage to passing vehicles. It also prevents damage to passing vehicles. I had a broken windshield not too long ago. So if the streets are not properly swept and cleaned, rocks and other objects could get scattered in the roadway and street gutters could cause serious damage to passing vehicles. So it prevents that. Next slide, please. Thank you. The question always arises, you know, what are we doing in the city of West Covina? And we also always want to monitor what other communities are doing and compare ourselves to best practices and how much does it cost to benefit from those best practices? So we tried to gather some information for you to share with you tonight. Obviously, we are going to have a more robust database. Next time we come before you, we're going to survey other cities and hopefully put aside enough time to be able to get some of the details and then share it with you. But in a nutshell, if we were to consider two cities of Carson and Norwalk, we chose those cities because they have weekly services and we wanted to see what is the cost of a weekly service. In the city of Carson, which has about 19 square miles, the cost of the service annually is about 1.2 million dollars. And they employ about three sweepers to be able to completely sweep their streets. In the city of Norwalk, they employ about 2.5 sweepers. And one may ask, how does half a sweeper work? It's primarily on the hours of operation, just like a full-time employee and part-time employee. It's an equivalent measure. And the annual cost is about 1.116, which is for 9.7 square miles. And if you notice, please, it's about half of the size... Norwalk is about half the size of the city of Carson, but yet the annual cost is just about the same. This is an important point because the cost of service is not just based on how many sweepers they employ. It is a characteristic of a particular municipality. Do we have a lot of hilly streets? Are there challenges with street sweepers and parked cars? Typically, we want to maintain a speed of about five miles per hour for sweepers in order for them to be able to complete their routes in an efficient manner. So if they take longer than that, that efficiency goes away. So a lot of factors involved. It's not just the curb miles. A lot of factors involved. The city of Southgate, we reached out to them. Unfortunately, we couldn't get the information from them in a timely manner. But as I indicated, when the item comes back before you next time, we will have a larger database and base of comparison. Next slide, please. Thank you. Now, a little bit of a background about the city of West Covina, service delivery for sweeping, street sweeping. Generally, the city is currently divided into five street sweeping zones. If you could imagine, if I drew an axis along Azusa, you will have three of those districts or zones on the west side and then two on the east side. And there are five zones because each zone gets swept on a given day of the week from Monday through Fridays. Approximately, we sweep about 463 curb miles of streets within those five zones. And as you know, they are swept twice a month, ever since 2015. The city's downtown area gets swept twice a week on Mondays and Fridays. All city-owned parking lots and the civic center parking lot, parking structure are also being swept. The current street sweeping schedule, as I indicated, was established back in 2015. Prior to that, the city was being swept every week. Because of budgetary constraints, the city changed that model to every other week. And only a fraction of our streets have posted signs for street sweeping parking prohibitions. There is going to be a map coming up that shows you the location of those signs where they are. And I have to indicate that regretfully, that data has not been updated ever since 2015. So there is a need for us to go back and revise this information, bring up fresh data before you so the decision could be made. And majority of our residential streets are swept, generally speaking, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Typically, what you have seen, one side of the street gets swept somewhere between 7:00 to 11:00, and the other side of the street gets swept between 11:00 to 2:30 or 3:00 o'clock. This is the map that I was referring to that shows the city of West Covina, street sweeping map. As I indicated, if you took Azusa Avenue, to the right you will have, or to the east you will have, two districts that have Wednesdays and Fridays scheduled. And to the west, you will have three zones that are swept Monday, Tuesday, and Thursdays. Next slide, please. This is the map that shows you how scarce our street sweeping parking restriction signs are in various parts of the city. Next slide, please. Now, if we were to consider options, options are different service delivery models. We want to know roughly, how much would it cost us? The first thing that we have to consider is that an effective street sweeping program, as everyone knows, heavily relies on a sweeper being able to follow a straight line along the gutter, hopefully be able to drive around five miles an hour and do a good job picking up the debris and trash from the streets. Parked cars do not allow the street sweepers to do that. And the first instrument in a toolbox for us to be able to accomplish that is the proper and appropriate parking restriction regime. And in order for having that, in order to be enforceable, we have to have signs posted throughout the city. Roughly the cost of installing signage throughout the city, and we estimated that to be around 4,300 to 4,400 signs that we have to post, is going to be around $550,000. You have the signs. You make sure that the proper provisions are in the city code. Now you have to enforce it. So what would be the cost of parking enforcement? We don't enforce street sweeping parking right now, parking prohibitions right now. If we were to do that, there's an upfront cost. You have to start by hiring part-time staff, probably. You have to buy vehicles for them. You have to buy gadgets for them to be able to do their jobs. That upfront cost is going to be around $250,000. And from there on, on an annual basis, you have to spend about $425,000 to continue the parking enforcement program. And then it is an estimate and...
I'm sorry, can I interrupt? Okay, regarding the parking enforcement, we have a co-enforcement staffing already. Can that the price go down? City Manager?
Through the chair. We've had some initial conversations with our co-enforcement director about this question, and he's got a lot of experience in this area. He was positing that perhaps he could have an entry-level position that would directly follow the sweeper. And if somebody happened to be parked where they weren't supposed to be during the prohibited hours, they'd get a ticket and then they wouldn't come back. So once the sweeper passed, if a car was there, they'd get a ticket, but then once that moment...
I saw some...
...by. So they're not looking at using journey-level co-enforcement officers, but rather entry-level?
I saw some other city, like Almonte, they have a co-enforcement or parking enforcement behind the sweeper.
Exactly right.
Okay, and so in that way, people have to move their car so the sweeper can sweep, really clean the street. So people have to move the car, okay? But I just don't understand why we need to spend $250,000, set it up, since if we already have the staffing? And why it costs $470,000 continuously if we already have a staff? They're already there, so they just follow the sweeper and do the job.
Well, if I may, we'll get you the numbers behind these numbers when this issue goes public and when it returns. We'll have those answers for you.
Thank you.
And then if we were to consider a weekly street sweeping, this is an estimate. This number is going to go down. This number is going to be negotiated. There could be different methods of securing a contract with a better value for our residents. Just an estimate because... And the estimate was essentially based on the fact that currently we have two sweepers that operate in the city on any given day. When we have leaf season or storm, then there is a third unit that is brought because some of the areas have to be swept twice. However, if you expand that to a weekly schedule, we are going to have to bring in four sweepers. These sweepers are not cheap. Each one costs about $500,000. So it's a capital investment on the part of whoever the service provider is going to be. Because of that, the cost of operation is going to go up. So again, this is an estimated number. If you want to roughly take a look at the entire program's cost to change the service delivery model from every two weeks to weekly street sweeping, it's going to cost about $2 million a year. Now, what are some of the challenges that we have? And what are the opportunities? And what are the next steps if we were to explore a different service delivery model? As I indicated to you, the biggest challenge that we are faced with right now, as far as our current operation is concerned, are the parked cars. There was, I believe there was a photo that was attached in the packet in the agenda that shows a small stretch of a street and you had about eight or seven cars parked in there. You can't properly and effectively sweep a street when your street sweeper has to constantly maneuver in and out of the gutter to avoid the parked cars. So the biggest impediment is, you know, again, not having the proper parking enforcement regime in place and not providing that straight line for the street sweeper to allow them to do their jobs properly. In order to do that, as I indicated to you a minute ago, we have to post new signs throughout the city, about 4,400 of them. And the cost is going to be about $500,000 to $550,000, $250,000 upfront cost for parking enforcement. You can't do any of that without looking and reevaluating the routes that we established back in 2015. The routes will definitely change. We have to optimize the current routes in order to provide for a weekly service delivery model. And in doing that, we have to consider many factors, including the impacts of the adjacent land use. The characteristic of street sweeping in a single residential neighborhood is quite different than when you are dealing with streets that have apartments, multifamily residential units. You just heard it a minute ago. The challenge is that the residents have to park their vehicles because they don't have adequate parking spaces on site. All of those factors need to be considered because ultimately, at the end of the day, what the city desires to do is to provide an optimum service delivery model with minimum impact and discomfort to its residents. So optimizing the routes in order to keep that balance in mind is extremely important. And of course, along with that, is to revise the city of West Covina municipal code to make sure that we have the instruments in place for parking enforcement to be, for enforcement to be enforceable. And then like any other new program that the city undertakes, it behooves us that if we were to do a new model, to come back, evaluate it after some times, tweak it, change it, modify it as needed, to perfect it and optimize it. None of this is going to happen without and in absence of gathering information and input from our residents. City Manager Carmini, in his response section of the meeting, elaborated on that, focused on and emphasized on the importance of this factor, and this is the intent. So let me enumerate some of the goals of the community outreach program that the city is envisioning. First and foremost, it is to understand the community's vision for this aspect of the city operation. We heard from our residents that this is your idea, not ours. We know that. This is just a concept. And concept is not a solid idea without gaining and having the benefit of public information. So that would be our first step. And then along with that, we are going to take a look at the examples, the successful examples of the other communities. How are they best managing their street sweeping programs? Take that data. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. We're going to share the success stories of other communities, understand how do they do that? And if we can benefit from that information, we're going to share that with the members of the public and get their inputs. And get their input about, do they think that particular solution is going to be a good solution for us? Along with that, as I indicated, state is changing its regulations, particularly with regards to the stormwater management rapidly. We are under a permit with the Los Angeles Water Board. The permit was last updated in 2016. We have, by law, we have to monitor the amount of pollutants that be put in the waterways, receiving waters. There is a program in place with the cooperation of the Los Angeles County Public Works Department. We have to measure what we put out in the waterways on a monthly basis and report it to the water board. It is a strict program. We have to comply with its provisions. And if we didn't do that, there are going to be fines involved. We haven't paid any fines. We don't intend to pay any fines in the future. And in order to guarantee that, we are going to employ the proper street sweeping program. We are going to ensure that we are going to have an inclusive community outreach process to identify the current desires and priorities of the members of the public. And then, of course, just like any other program that the city offers, we're going to make sure that whatever program we offer is going to be fair and equitable across the board to all of our residents. Dissemination of information in order to be able to gather public information is extremely important. Some of the vehicles that we are going to employ to achieve that is to conduct community meetings. The initial thought is to have a community meeting or meetings in each zone, in each sweeping zone. We have five zones, so we're going to have meetings in each one, in each neighborhood. We are going to use the city's newsletter, Discover Newsletter, which is an accorded basis comes out, to disseminate the information. We are going to hit the social media platforms hard, put out that information so we can make sure that everyone has access to it and encourage people to share their information with us. And of course, we're going to put all of this information on the city's website. Thank you. So as City Manager Carmini mentioned, this is the first step. This is to initiate a conversation, to understand the information that we have before us, to make sure that if we were to change the service delivery model from every two weeks to every week, how much is it going to cost us? What is it going to take? What is the mechanics inside and out to implement that? But more importantly, what does the community think about it? Provide that information, come back before you, provide that information, and then once a decision is made, to go forward from there. But for the time being, our staff recommendation is for the City Council respectfully to receive and file this report. And then, of course, to encourage broad public dissemination of this topic, which we told you how we're going to do that and achieve that. And direct staff, community outreach forum be held to solicit public comments and information and input. With that, I thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'll be happy to answer any... I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilman Cantos.
To what extent do we currently have an ability to reach every resident in, or every household in the City of West Covina through either postcards or, or or other ways to ensure that we, we get to everybody, not just those who are on our existing current mailing list? Because we've found that whenever we've, we've held different community meetings, there really hasn't been high attendance, but significant, a significant number of residents in the community, I'm not sure if they necessarily know about those events. So can you describe further about our capacity or our ability to get to every, every stakeholder resident in this community so they can have an opportunity to participate in the outreach meetings?
Mayor, if I may, we've gotten good success with our own Discover magazine, which gets delivered to everybody's mailbox is the idea. We've also utilized stuffers within the Athens trash bills. That seems to be a pretty effective vehicle. Our social media, we have a number of platforms handles for that. But point is, not everybody's on that. Not everybody uses Twitter and all of them, Facebook, you name one.
Exactly.
But I think if we used a myriad of approaches, including the announcement of, of community forums in this room or at the community center or, or wherever, take the story on the road a little bit, I think we could get good, good gain and good, good outreach with it.
Good. And what is the anticipated timeline for organizing hosting, organize these meetings, hosting them, collecting the feedback, putting together the, the, the different proposed solutions and then coming back to council?
Thank you very much for that question, Councilmember Cantos. Based on what we know now, the information we have available, I think putting together a two to three months program would be probably a good timeframe to look at initially.
And is, is it possible to look at different neighborhoods individually in light of the different dynamics associated with the way that different parts of West Covina are built? Such as the, the different areas where there is higher population density with apartments and a shortage of parking? And then other residential areas in which parking is not an issue because of those areas primarily being composed of single-family homes without ADUs?
Absolutely. As you indicated, that's a, a very important aspect of having the proper toolbox in order to make the decisions that we need to make. Absolutely. That needs to, that needs to be accomplished.
And so if we were to agree to receive and file this report, it is absolutely clear to you and to the community that, that we have no preset policy as to what we are going to do. You were saying that this is just an initial step, after which we will, we will be having a more comprehensive, tailored solution based on a, a process that, that, that operationalizes community input from the beginning and then reflecting that input in, in what ultimately is recommended?
Madam Mayor, yes, Councilmember Cantos, absolutely. This is just a first step to start a dialogue and a conversation and to gather information so that the decisions that we're going to be making is based on data and input from the community.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
For the most part.
Councilwoman Lopez Oviedo.
Thank you, Mayor, for the most part, Councilwoman Cantos. I had a lot of the questions, but a few of the questions I have, I know especially during a big concern with street parking is sometimes at 7:00 AM when parents are still rushing and taking the kids to school. I just wanted to let you know, high school this year started, starts at 8:30. So that is a big change to the community as well. So school and taking them out, they got to be out by 8:30. So 7:00 AM is just way too early. The, I mean, some of the, what the residents shared, some of the concerns, I do agree, and I hope you were able to take notes of those concerns. And I know one resident said about LA and parking, believe me, I know that that is tough there. But the fees is also an impact of what it costs. A few years ago, I know I received one for, it was a different area and everybody was parked there, but they were quickly gone at that time, timeframe. And at that, I don't know what year was that, it was $75. I'm sure it went up, probably 90s or 100 for parking. So I, 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 that, that is a big factor as well with fees. Currently at the moment, I know a lot of residents don't even know what their street parking is like. Like I know in my block, we have new residents that moved in. They don't even know, you know, unless we speak to them, they wouldn't know when that occurs. So the, the signs are very important, whether we go weekly or bi-weekly. But the, the signs is important for all the residents to know. With, you know, it's nice to know, I mean, if it's weekly or bi-weekly, it's easier for residents to put like, okay, street sweeping first and third or second and fourth of the month, so that there's like that main consistency. And of course, it should be one side, street sweeping and then the next day. Cause I know, lived in Rosemead, it's like, okay, this day we move our car there across the street and then we move it back. So high-density areas, at least that needs to be taken into consideration. Let's see. And then in regards to all the street sweepers, how many companies are there? And are we going to be going out to bid in regards to that as well?
Tom, do you want to answer that?
Somebody, anybody could answer.
I don't know if we're going out to bid or, or not. We could, we could use the same sweeping company that was, street sweeping company that we have right now, we could use the same one. There is no exclusivity. It's silent on exclusivity, so we could continue on with them, expand, or we could go out.
Okay. I mean, of course, when, when we are talking about the costs, that is a big factor. So I don't know, we wouldn't know what the going rate cost will be. So I mean, that's why I bring it up. And I know we've had an issue with street sweeping. I think, what was the last time we discussed about this, what, a year ago? Like on my street, I didn't even know when they come, they randomly come. And a big issue I had, especially like in LA, they're really quick to cite you. And then there was never a street sweeper. So I, I want to make sure, if they're going to cite me, they better make sure they clean my streets. I know there's trash and, and debris, broken, you know, or it's just anything that's on the street. Especially on a windy day when all the leaves are around or the gardener and all that stuff. But I just want to make sure that that is cohesive with, you know, oh, yeah, just that. And then I think, no, that, that's, that's all my questions. Thank you. And yeah, of course.
Councilwoman.
Exception permits too, but that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I, I think, okay. It's a good presentation. Thank you so much. Okay, as a, okay, at least we understand the street sweeping is very important. Okay, we see a lot of streets really automatic. And we always have to, like Santos, okay, we always have to call our staff and to manually sweep. And that's almost impossible for our limited manpower and go to clean up due to the car parking over there forever. So I, I, I think, okay, and everybody talk about environment, okay, talking about clean street, talking about the state regulation, and we just have no choice. Okay, we need to make sure our street is clean. But how can we do in less impact to our resident? And I think that's, we have to look into it. I think weekly street sweeping is a must because I don't even know, I haven't seen any sweeper on my street. So I don't know even when they're coming in, when they come. For example, if we can do, just for example, we all know, okay, what day you have to pull your trash out at nighttime? And after they clean, they, they clean your trash can and nighttime, or you come home, you pull your bag. Okay, and you get used to it every day and every week you're doing that. Is that possible? Okay, we can, like today is the trash day and they know next day the sweeper will come and to clean your street. Because when they clean your trash can, a lot of debris will fly all over places. Sometime they're on your street. So I know some other city, the trash company and the sweeper, street sweeping is the same company. You're only doing one trash company, but West Covina, we have a two trash company. Okay, and then we paying for Athens and then we have to pay extra for Nationwide. And both of them all have a long contract. Why is Evergreen and why is what, 15 years? So and now we basically, we cannot combine these two together because doing the contract. And then Councilwoman Leti Lopez asked about how we do it. And then now can we get rid of Nationwide contract? Maybe not. Can we do another week for another company? I don't know if it's feasible or not. How much are they going to give an estimate to clean? So I think that is the issue I would suggest the city to look into and give a estimate how much it's going to, from all these company, are we going to do? Okay, without weekly, okay, I think it's not going to work because nobody will move their car. And second thing, if we do weekly, what day, what time? Okay, for those, okay, so when you go to community outreach, you have to talk to each of, okay, different community because that we are diverse. Okay, some is more high-density, while some places a little bit more kind of live apart. So we need to attend each of a different need and how we can entertain, okay, and about their parking issue. And I remember back in 2019, I still live on 235 Leve. It's a much smaller home with all the, okay, home together. I remember that time is weekly street sweeping and I move my car. I remember I have to move my car for, for the sweeper to clean my street. I want to make sure my, my, my street is clean in my portion. So I think, I think it's important, okay, to make sure that is feasible and how you put the signage. Okay, and the signage go to entire city, okay, in different area. And how, okay, the resident, they react to you, what time would be more feasible for them to move the car? Okay, and how much is the fine if they don't move the car or move the trash can? Okay, because some people leave their trash can there forever. Okay, and then you cannot, okay, street sweeping, okay, and clean the street. And if you're doing a weekly and you have obstacle, the car, the trash can and debris over there, you basically, you, it's, even weekly, you still cannot do the job. So we really need the people move their car. Okay, move their other stuff, all the street during the street sweeping that day, just like when they're moving their trash can on the street and then they move their trash can back to their home. When they get used to it and when their car moving around, hopefully they can let the sweeper to sweep their, their, their home, okay? Or their area, or make sure the street is clean and the debris. But again, this need community outreach, they need, okay, persuasion, education and to work together. We need everybody work together. Okay, and now we're not trying to force people, but we try to see how it will work. Okay, and the clean our street. But, but I think it's a good start. Okay, at least we are looking into how to make sure our street is clean and then make sure the car not going to park there forever and ever. Okay, and then that would never be clean. So, so hopefully this is a, a good start for community outreach and everybody can input. Thank, thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez.
Thank you. Just curious, what is the current policy when there's a, with street sweeping and there's a roadkill like on the, like dead possums, birds, cats? Do they, do the street sweeper go over it and do they call in for that? I mean, I've seen it sometimes where it's not literally in the middle of the road. It's towards the, the parking of the neighbors. And I, I know I've reported it, but just for the sake of everyone else.
I have to, Madam Mayor, I have to confirm with them, but based on my experience in other communities, they would call it in.
The street sweepers would call it in?
Right. They would call it in.
Good to know. And then as for the public comments, I know every, like, especially the high-density areas, they're really busy with their time, families and everything. If they can't attend the in-person, is the video, I mean, would they have like a virtual? Or would they be able to show the video and be able to email? So listen, I just want to make sure that you cover all grounds, especially to those who are not able to.
Madam Mayor, if I may, for the past three years, we all have been conditioned because of COVID to conduct our meetings remotely. So absolutely, we will provide that opportunity to make sure that we are going to reach a broader audience. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is in regards to the time, you know, being courteous to residents, are they going to, well, I would prefer it be limited time. For example, no parking from nine to 12, 12 to three versus no parking all day or no parking from nine, you know, full eight hours. That one is also going to be taken into consideration, correct?
Absolutely. There are, there are some communities that have an all-day prohibition. We don't have that and we're not going to have that. We're going to choose the best model in order to be able for the sweepers to be, to do their jobs with minimum impact to the residents. Parking is scarce, we understand that. And we want to, we want to keep that in mind. Absolutely, we will do that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, one last question.
Councilman Cantos.
Sorry. To what extent is, are we going to be factoring in gutter maintenance to make sure that the gutters themselves are clean of debris?
If I can understand the concert, the, the context of the question, Councilmember, you want us to make sure that the gutters are going to be properly cleaned by the sweeper in an efficient manner or?
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if it's you or if that's a separate matter, just so I can, we can understand for later. Because if we have street sweeping, but then the gutters aren't clear or cleaned regularly, then that could lead to later problems down the road anyway. So just wanted to make sure that we factor this in at some point. I don't know if it's through this or some other mechanism, but that's why I wanted to ask.
Mayor, if I may attempt to answer, the, the normal practice is for the sweeper to sweep a, a path about five feet wide, starting at the face of the curb outboard. So the gutter would be where the mechanical broom would run. Although sweeper technology is changing and some of these are contactless and, and run on air vacuum systems. But, but the basic path of travel is at the face of the curb toward the center. So it would run along the curb line, including the gutter.
Okay, thank you. We just, I just want to make sure that however way that, that, that the gutters will be clear through weather, this or something else, so that way we can make sure that, that that doesn't become a problem later on. Thank you.
Understood.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, to, to follow up, I, I, I think one, one thing we, we would like to look at beyond just our, our street sweeping protocols is, is how we are as a city keeping our, our gutters clean as a, as a separate matter. One, one thing that I, I would also like, like to request is some type of PSA video that I'm, I'm sure the, the Water Quality Control Board already has on, on why it's, it's necessary for, for street sweeping. If we can have that up on, on the website, share it on social media. Just, I, I, I don't think many of us are even educated on all the reasons why street sweeping is necessary, you know, what it has to do with our, our storm water and, and you know, what all that means and, and why, you know, it's, it's been passed as law, right? And what the Clean Water Act actually is and why we have it. I think once, you know, the community can understand that, then the understanding of, of why street sweeping and why it, it should be done weekly and why our inability to clear all the debris because of the parked cars is, is an issue and a problem. So if, if we can do that education part, I think it's really important. So that way, when people come to these community meetings, they, they already have a background knowledge and an understanding. So I would just like to add that to the conversation. Thank you.
Through the chair, point, point made. I can tell you, when I first became city manager in Seal Beach, and I was there for four years, I did not appreciate all of the debris that comes down the San Gabriel River. And that's where our waters flow, is by some storm drain system out through the San Gabriel River and the mouth is right there at Seal Beach. And it is unbelievable, the furniture, the ice chests, the break dust, you name it, it all goes right there. I get the ocean health warnings from LA County Department of Public Health. And, and the rule of thumb is you don't want to swim in those waters for three days after a rain. It is, it's our ocean and, and we got to be good stewards upstream. That's, that's a big part of this, this NPD system.
Yes, so now we just receipt and file. I do want to say thank you for your presentation.
it was really informative and I'm looking forward to the information that we receive from our community.
Madam Mayor thank you very much one thing that I promised Assistant City Manager Morales that I'm going to share and I neglected to share that information with you was the fact that and it was brought up by Councilmember Cabot Tabai and the others how do we find out where our streets are going to be swept we don't have that robust tool right now we're going to be working on a GIS map I promise that if you put in your address you will find out where are you in the city in each one of those zones where are you in those zones and which days your streets are going to be swept and to answer the comment that Councilmember Wu brought up currently and if currently it is the fact that the street sweepers go behind the day after the trash is picked up and we're going to continue that that operation because it is the most efficient way of dealing with cleaning up of debris in the in the gutters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay let's move on to item number six.
Do we need to motion?
Madam Chair just motion motion to approve staff recommendation.
I'll motion to move.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you I have a I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado and a second by Mayor Protim Tabat Tabai to receive and file item number three consideration of implementation of weekly street sweeping program including the posting and enforcement of no parking street sweeping signs Councilman Cantos.
Aye.
Councilman Wu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabat Tabai.
Aye.
Mayor Diaz.
Aye.
Thank you item passes five zero.
Mayor item six on your agenda tonight concerns the annual paving program this is the first of what we hope will be two paving projects this year this one is funded with SB one funds we have a report ready to go tonight Okon is here you're getting to see the entire city engineering department this evening but we have a report ready if you'd like to do one we're prepared to to present.
Yes.
Thank you Okon.
Good evening Mayor members of the council my name is Okon Demir Samit the engineering department today we have a short presentation for the upcoming fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three residential streets rehabilitation program and we're going to give you a project status update next slide please as part of the city's payment management program the proposed project involves payment rehabilitation and payment maintenance work on the recommended streets from the payment management program the proposed work includes approximately eight-hundred eighty thousand square feet of asphalt slurry seal construction and approximately one-point-nine million square feet of asphalt concrete resurfacing next slide please the the proposed recommendations are coming from the most current payment management plan which was prepared in two thousand twenty and this payment management program is a required planning tool for every city to be eligible to receive Prop C funding as well as federal certain federal funding and it is required to be updated every three years we are currently updating the payment management program and the new update will be ready by August two thousand twenty-three the proposed project location is shown on this map the limits of the proposed project is on the north side we have I-ten on the east side of the proposed project we have Sunset Avenue on the south side we have Fair Grove Avenue and on the west side we have Puente Avenue it is essentially the west segment of the city which is the segment number six of the twelve maintenance zones we're going to be addressing number six as part of this project next slide please this slide shows an overall view of the recent payment management projects that have been completed since two thousand twenty in the last three years this project will be the fifth project as part of the street rehabilitation amongst the five projects that have been four projects that have been completed and this fifth one which is anticipated to start in June two thousand twenty-three and completed by September two thousand twenty-three we're looking at approximately ten-point-three million square feet of streets of the total city network the total city network is approximately forty-seven million square feet so this is essentially twenty-two percent of the entire city network which will be addressed by end of September two thousand twenty-three in the last three years since two thousand twenty and the total costs including this upcoming project this summer will be approximately eleven-point-two million dollars for the last three years next slide oh yeah so we have some additional slides that shows the completed projects in the last three years so this is essentially the project completed in two thousand twenty this is the northeast segment of the city next slide please this is the next segment which was completed in two thousand twenty-one which is the easterly east center part of the city and following with the next slide there the one of the two projects that were was completed in two thousand twenty-two this is the the southerly segment as well as the next slide which was the last project that was completed late two thousand twenty-two which was zone number five which is essentially adjacent to this proposed projects that that is upcoming this summer so that concludes the presentation and I'm happy to take any questions you may have thank you.
Councilman Cantos.
Thank you for the presentation okay and then.
I thought he was going to ask that's why I wasn't were you yes.
Let me finish.
Okay.
Put the I put the agenda and then let me allow me to go first and you go second it's okay okay so so I think it's to go back to the the reason I pull this is that okay I think we paving the street that's wonderful okay we love it okay the city manager every time he paved the street he called me he said I want you to come over here yeah he he loved paving the street and I love to see the beautiful street and people happy about that but the the question I have is have and have not okay because some of the street have been been paved for twenty thirty years okay and and some area my understanding my I'm sorry my old my old neighborhood on the store between the Lock Island and Azusa Island neighborhood have been paved couple times and so 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 how we okay I know we are going to do the survey again and then hopefully this survey we can be completed to see entire city so we don't waste the resource okay and then so we do the street that been doing ten years ago we did it we do it again and then some places haven't been done for a long long time and like my street haven't been paid for twenty-five years maybe even longer okay and then if go to south side this three four and this three five south side a lot of streets like twenty-five years thirty years and you can see the alligator scale on the street and the crack so so I think how how we and to make sure those street will be okay paved and be fixed and how we justify I know right now we just based on okay the previous three years of a survey so you're doing that so how can we more for the future I think we survey coming up right city manager?
Through the chair Okon could I ask you to call back up the slide we talked about the payment management program and and the the three-year life of it and then could you expound on this a little bit and tell the council members where we are with respect to this engineering scope I know there's some interesting pieces to this including not only evaluation of the streets to to the new standard but also sidewalks Okon would you mind giving us a description of what's happening with this PMP?
Absolutely thank you Mr. City Manager Councilman Wu so the payment management program the last one is two thousand twenty so we are currently working with the consultant to update the payment management program and anticipated completion is September two thousand twenty-three so as part of the payment management program there is a walking survey by the consultants team it's a two-man crew basically they literally walked every street including residential streets collector and arterial streets and they take a field survey of existing conditions based on visual observations as part of these observations they take samples of basically existing conditions and they identify each failure type in compliance with Army Corps engineer Army Corps of Engineers standards and then once they get that data they input that to the system we call we use Street Saver it's one of the most commonly used payment management software used by many cities so we use it here at the city as well so once we input all that data essentially that system calculates and gives a PCI number we call it payment condition index that's a number from zero to one hundred one hundred being a brand-new street zero being a failed street basically and the city's current network as of two thousand twenty was sixty-eight PCI was sixty-eight out of one hundred to give you a benchmark the statewide average is sixty-six so it was just slightly above the statewide average payment condition index so in the last three years with the five projects that have been completed on the current program we will see the results of the recent work that has been accomplished to date and that those results will be available this summer we will certainly present that payment management plan update to the council with the most completed projects but essentially the the system is a framework and a budgeting tool that analyzes all the existing conditions of all streets and based on the available funding it creates scenarios based on those scenarios the system essentially guides us to address which street should be addressed based on the available funding and it is really a science behind it it is engineering economics more than anything because the funds are limited and we have to really come up with a a a a framework and a scenario that's gonna maximize the use of those available funds.
Yep thank you so much it's so engineering deep speech but I think most of people just want to see their street that crack okay and alligator scale and for example old gate and that street is extremely problematic and that is disintegrate okay you can.
Sorry which one council member?
Old gate old gate W O D G A T old gate it's a big street.
Understand.
Okay and and I I remember I sent that request but you say maybe a next next it's a it's a busy street okay basically only street old gate can go into okay different community different smaller street the smaller streets look better okay and but that old gate is really a major issue can see maybe twenty-five years or maybe they have a major truck going through I don't think we allowed a big truck going to the residential but again so what I'm saying is this because when you walk you see the problem and plus you have a resident complain to you and say my my street never been paid for thirty years so how can we give them a justification with a new survey we're going to come out and let them see their street condition transparency transparent okay and then when their seat their street will be anticipate to be paid okay I think with that because everybody pay taxes everybody on what want to their street to be nice I understand that but we only have a certain budget we need to okay go into the schedule but I think the new survey hopefully can do a better and maybe more transparent to the resident to type in their address and they can see when was the last time they paid okay and when they and their their conditions level A B C D I don't know what what level is that and then when their street will be paid so in that way I don't think anybody will have a issue and they know but now currently everybody in the dark okay and so hopefully I know what you have right now is based on previous survey and you have to go with the previous survey hopefully we can add some of a very extremely problematic street and add into as an option because you have fifty percent on and off so hopefully if we can see quite a lot of south side street is really not presentable and if you look around okay it's really cracking up a big time so hopefully your engineer or your survey can go to take a look like we walk around then we see and we talk to the resident and they're really extremely problematic so hopefully we can address their concern and to rather than I know you talk about engineer how you do this phase four and the older level this and that but for the people just see their street is horrible visually horrible driving horrible okay and I've always have asked the city to fix their pothole and due to they're cracking up okay and they're breaking apart so hopefully I understand but the reason what I'm going to pull out is how can we address okay for the future sake and then we will be more detail and when we're going to have a new survey city manager do you know the timeline?
Through the chair we expect to have the new pavement management plan in front of your consideration this fall I would say September is a good time quote and then you can give it a careful look this project that you're approving tonight and the next one will still be relying on the previous date I guarantee these are righteous.
So so the the new survey coming out the new survey coming out is will be September?
Anticipated completion I think he's quoting August for the new pavement management plan one of the features of that is residents will be able to type in their address and see context of of their piece to the hole and and how that fits in one of the things that's important as you let these contracts important to me is this contingency money he said fifteen percent it wouldn't hurt my feelings if you council you made it twenty because we always run into streets that have a numerical score of a fifty-one and if we're running contractor crews we can just do a change order and say pave this one right now.
Yes.
And so that contingency is really valuable to us as we're you know trying to get the streets to to better standard.
My last question on on this is not on general fund right this is on our general restricted fund.
These are restricted funds SB one Okon correct me if I'm wrong but as I recall it's SB one and so if there are contingency monies that aren't SB one eligible then we'll have to find other sources of money.
Very good thank you so much.
Councilman Cantos.
So Rocon the I would imagine that the that the the reports that would that would be produced by the software would depend on the parameters you put in so there's a difference between trying to get us to the highest score on average and looking at you know on one hand and on the other hand looking at the most the roads that are in most significant need of repair so is that a manual is that done manually let's say if the council says we really want to just increase our average score versus we really want to to look at the that the streets that are in the high have the greatest degree of need to be repaired how can you shed light on how that software works in terms of how policy decisions impact the results of the resulting report that happens when you use the software?
Absolutely I'll be happy to the approach to the software is obviously we have forty-eight million square feet of network that we have to address and we get the data input into the system it categorizes the proposed improvements into different segments from the constructability standpoint it it will be very difficult to select random streets from the entire city and have one contractor to try to address multiple different segments at the same time from constructability from traffic control from cost of moving equipment and it will be basically a very messy construction in this case we are addressing it in a more organized manner we have twelve maintenance zones that is identified as part of the payment management plan and when the system gets the data the scenarios are categorized into those twelve different zones in essentially one project focuses on one maintenance zone at at a given time so we have more narrow focused areas so to say so that it is constructible it is easier traffic control it's less inconvenience to public so that is the best practice in approaching to basically applying payment management program practices.
That makes sense so in other words you're saying that within each of the twelve zones there are priorities that are set based on the software so that would mean that if some of those twelve zones have really difficult roads that have not been repaired let's say in low-income areas then then that could actually be a priority within that one zone depending on the results of the survey?
Absolutely yes within the zone it categorizes different levels of payment conditions from zero to one hundred as I explained based on the payment condition index and based on those results we approach with different either payment maintenance either slurry seal or different approaches or payment rehabilitation which is either resurfacing or if it requires something more. or if it requires something more deeper and more involved rehabilitation, such as reconstruction, which is more costly, by the way. So, we were, that's when the engineering economics come into play. We try to maximize the utility, basically, by using the available funds. So, we try to prioritize, basically, based on the available funds. But we definitely address, we try to address all the residential streets within the program based on the available funds.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Thank you. Were you here when we had the detailed presentation, and of course, some of the council had the lengthy discussion on the last pavement plan?
The last pavement?
For one day, we had a detailed presentation, and it discussed everything that you just mentioned, including the PCI, the failed streets, the scores, et cetera. Or did you get to?
I was, yes.
You came with Dennis.
Okay. So, you heard our concerns, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, on this, in this case, I know the biggest issue I personally had was the dire streets that needed the most help, and they continued to be neglected. And then, we continue to fix streets that visually look great, and that was a big concern. And same thing with what Councilman Wu was stating, that those streets get repaved, and it looks the same while the streets were in dire conditions that needed help. And I understand that it did cost details of money and so forth, but I wanted to make sure that this upcoming PMP, which I know, I am grateful that all the streets that we have paved will most likely be there and shown, and we greatly appreciate that. I just want you to know, for the record, I don't think most residents really know or understand or even care what density or that, that number 68 over 100, because all they can care is like what they see and what the streets, where they live at, at their area. So, my question is, in regards to the segments of the streets, would that, the streets that are in dire condition in that segment, would that be taken into consideration to put the funding there to get that fixed, and, you know, hold back the other streets that look pretty much decent? Is that something that your program or what we're going to see? I just, I just don't want, coming into August and September, hearing the exact same presentation, and here we are stating, okay, we have the same issue, and, you know, nothing's going to be done. That is my concern, when this is going to be coming up to us, because it's clear.
Definitely understood. As part of the program, all streets, including failed streets, residential, collector, arterial, all streets are part of the study. And as part of that program, there will be scenarios, basically, probably two scenarios. Depending on the funding level, those scenarios will be presented in the payment management program presentation, which is around August, September timeline. So, at that time, we will come back to council, and we will present those scenarios, and based on the available funding, we will present perhaps two scenarios, which is typical. One scenario would be typical, like current funding levels, and perhaps another scenario typically would be a higher funding level for city councils' consideration. And in those scenario presentation, we can discuss further conclusions based on the option of higher funding scenario, which would possibly allow us to address more streets that are in dire need, as you explained. So, obviously, some math, mathematics, right, engineering economics, more funding available is, gives more opportunity to address.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, of course, money makes the world, and I understand the funding is a big thing. But with the upcoming presentation, would you have those stats of if the council goes in this direction and takes care of this neighborhood or this street, we will be eliminating this? I just want to make sure that coming into the next presentation, I won't hear, well, we'll get back to you. I just want to make sure that it's all prepared, and we have these options. So, currently, right now, the streets that we repair is what level of number that, of index? Is it like, it has to be, you know, certain, currently, what's the index of getting those streets repaired? And then, the ones that, I know the zero failed streets, that's not even part of the pavement plan, but I just wanted to know the number.
Just to make sure I understand the question correctly, the addressed streets within the three years, you would like to know the current PCI of those streets that have been rehabilitated as part of the program?
Yeah, you know what? I guess we can have both.
I can answer that question in a different context, if I may. I'd like to try.
Go ahead. Thank you.
To have a score of 68, if the goal is to beat the standard at 70, city's doing pretty well. We looked at whether it would make sense to add a big bolus of money by bonding out against some of these restricted funds, Measure R, Measure M, creating a big amount of cash that could be then put into asphalt to get ahead of it. And if we were way behind the curve, if we were 50-something citywide, I would say that might make sense, otherwise, the streets are just going to turn into rubble mounts. But the city's system is working. It's working pretty well. We'll, we hear you in terms of what answers you want to see when the next PMP comes out. But hopefully, we'll have some good results to share in terms of how this approach, how effective is this approach, this path that we're now on. Some of the streets that we paved in this most recent cycle, the last paving job, let it were awful. We had one that was, I think it was a 52. And so, we were really behind the curve, but I think we're catching up, and I think, I'm hopeful that the results will prove that when it comes back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you, mayor. First, I guess one question I had is, in the calculus of the street paving, do we consider the amount of traffic when we're looking at the zone, right? So, here, we're looking at Zone 6. When we're considering, do we consider the amount of cars that go through? So, like, for instance, Merced, which is on, is set to be paved, it's right off the 10 freeway exit, it's a well, right? It's used throughout the city, right? People go through that Merced. So, is that one of the things that goes into the formula? Like, how many cars actually drive and need it, right? I think you said arterials, right? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. The functional classification is incorporated into the system. The system basically divides into three main categories, residential, collector, and arterial. So, the traffic index category, we are looking at more broader level. We don't have the traffic data for every street on the system, but yeah, so there is a classification grouping into three different functional classification, residential, collector, and arterial.
Yeah, last one, thank you, mayor. I guess the other question, and Councilman Contos brought it up, which was a good point that I've brought up in the past. As far as the, the level of income in terms of areas, I know we have some areas of the city that are more low-income, that cannot afford any damage to a car with potholes and poor streets. I don't know if there's a mechanism in the formula to consider the income levels of the areas in a particular zone. So, is that part of the calculus at all, or it doesn't come into play?
Payment management program does not have a calculus, but last year, for example, to give an example, we have leveraged CDBG funds as well, to basically maximize the bank for the buck, so to say. So, last year's project, that's why it had more funding availability, and we've targeted low, medium-income zones for the CDBG project. So, that's how we augmented the current funding to address those zones.
Fantastic. Just final comment, so it's a residence understand, you know, when we are talking about cost of a lot of things the city pays, prevention is one of the big ways to minimize cost. And when you can prevent, especially low-income people, from having an emergency, you can prevent things like evictions, loss of jobs, homelessness, things like that. And so, I'm happy to hear that we are leveraging CDBG to make sure those areas are taken care of, so we don't run into these bigger issues later. Thank you, mayor.
Councilman Wu?
Yeah, just a quick question to follow up, I'd just say regarding the, some issue regarding the street currently, we haven't been addressed, okay? And another issue is, if you go to see the border, like, for example, like, half the street, half is West Covina, half is Warner, and you saw it, okay? The Warner side is new street, and our half, a little horrible, right? Dave, I think I show you, okay? And how can that be? Why can they, we, if they want to do, can we collaborate with our adjacent city? And for example, on the Valley View, on the South Side Valley View, you have a north, east, and south, but in the middle is county. Ah, can we pave the entire street, rather than pay portion, leave the middle? So, but I don't know what is the mechanism to make sure we can collaborate with other city? Go ahead.
Through the chair, every single time we're aware of a border project, I don't care if it's just paint, or if it also includes sewer work or asphalt or whatever, our default answer, and every single time, has been yes. Why that particular paving job was done, half the street, made no sense to me. But it's very typical, California cities work together. We're doing one now with Covina, and every single time we have a border project, we always cooperate.
Exactly.
Not to allow that situation to occur again, where you get half the street paved, makes no sense.
No sense at all.
I will work hard to make sure that we never.
It's like Warner, the only goal is their side, so we have to charge them if it goes our side. So, it doesn't make any sense, because they come in, they're going home, okay, they go out, they come in, they all have to use the road, so. And then, we should collaborate, we can pay them if they pave that street. So, maybe we talk to the Warner, next time, if they don't do it, then collaborate with us.
Baldwin Park, Covina, Walnut, name one, we always should be cooperating on border projects.
Exactly, yeah, okay. And would you please look into the Valley View too? That street is pretty problematic. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Thank you. Do you work with companies that are, like, for example, I know Merced is going to be repaved, and companies like Edison, or any other, or the ones that are building homes right now, they're going to be breaking the streets. Is that taken into consideration and working with them to make sure, like, those projects are completed? It's just, I hate to see a brand-new street, and then they dig it up, and then, right after, I see patches, like, you just drive and you see different colors, different patch, it's just horrible, it just looks.
Frontier.
Frontier, yeah, I guess, oh, Frontier, yeah, Frontier was the big one.
Frontier is to destroy our street.
And I don't want to see that happen again, but I just want to make sure, like, during these paving projects, can you make sure, like, they take care of that and get that done prior to the new street paving?
Definitely. The city has moratorium on slurry seal streets, I believe it's three years, and rehabilitated streets, resurfacing streets, I believe it's five years per ordinance. So, we, once the street is completed as part of the payment management program, the completed streets are updated on the database, and when a permit is applied for any type of improvement by a utility company or a private developer, those streets are checked to make sure that they are not in the moratorium area. And if it is in the moratorium area, there are strict requirements, such as, I mean, if it's an emergency work, then they have to fix it, but then rehabilitate the entire width of the street so that there is consistency.
Oh, yeah, okay, then that would be great. So, this applies for city manager, like, for example, Frontier, they should have just slurry street the whole street, right, technically?
We could have a whole agenda item on that particular utility.
Well, I'm not just saying just Frontier, but just any.
It is. And we got the right people here in the room now, if you want to do it tonight, but I can tell you, it has been a pain in my side. It has, it has been a big problem.
No, I understand, but I just want, again, preventive, to make sure it doesn't happen again, and that we don't see patches, and, okay, so, well, thank you for answering, and hopefully, that's taken care of. Perfect, thank you.
Councilman Wu?
And the city manager, how do you think? Okay, is that 15% is enough, or you want 20%? Okay, since this is a restricted fund.
If you're asking me, councilmember?
Yeah.
I would prefer 20% contingency.
Okay.
Because when these projects are running, the asphalt plant is there, we got the equipment in town, we got Earl Frazier, one of our good inspectors on the job, I say, let's.
Yeah, since this is a restricted fund, okay? And if we can get the funding, and I think we should give you the freedom to 20%, okay, for this, okay? And roughly, we can do fix more street. So, I moved the motion to approve, including the 20%, rather than 15%.
And I'll second, oh, that's okay. And I know our city manager does love paving streets, so I entrust that into you. Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu, and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado, to approve item number six, consideration of a construction agreement for fiscal year 2022-23 Residential Streets Rehabilitation Program, project number 23014, with an amendment to up the contingency to 20%.
Correct.
Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, mayor.
Good.
And number nine?
Item number nine, mayor, was also pulled.
Early. Good evening. Madam mayor, council.
Excuse me, item nine concerns in equipment purchase of some ambulances, which is very important to us. We've reached a situation recently where I would consider it quite nearly a collapse of government, we were transporting patients in equipment not designed for that purpose. So, we've been pretty aggressive about wanting to secure ambulances, and that's what this report recommends. The chief is here, if any of you have questions about what we're doing.
Councilman Wu?
Yes, okay, and the reason I pulled, okay, I understand, we all have a big problem with our paramedic, okay, and with the truck always broken down, okay? I think, and as I remember, on the station two, and they have to warm up, okay, because I think it's diesel, okay? And then, the smoke coming out big time, and I remember they told me, okay? So, I think we're going to purchase three brand-new ambulance, right?
Yeah, this, this staff report is to secure funds to purchase an ambulance that's ready to be built now, and prepare for two other ambulance chassis that are available, that we're able to locate. And when they're able to be built, hopefully, next 12 to 14 months, we'll have the funds ready to purchase those.
12 to 14 months? So, basically, if we order right now, we have to wait for 12 months?
It could be up to 12 to 14 months. There's a, as everybody knows, the supply and supply and demand chain, and everything out there is taking forever. So, we do have one available, if this gets approved, that could go right away, we'd have push by September.
I think city manager told me, we should have one, okay, we can purchase right away, because I think we need the ambulance ASAP, and.
Yes, it needs to be built, though. I mean, we have to have it built, they don't have it sitting for, there's no ambulance that's sitting for us to go pick up and buy on 14 right now, because if there is, it already bought. We actually had that opportunity a couple of months ago, we thought we, about a month ago, one sitting here, and another city actually wired cash while we were talking to them.
So, we missed that one, city manager?
We missed it, they were there before us. We tried to jump in front of them.
They were under contract, and a contract is a serious thing. We told the vendor, if they falter at all, if they don't have their money in by Monday, we'll take it, but we weren't able to secure it. That was a.
So, currently.
Diego County Department.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so currently, how many, okay, ambulance we have, still workable?
Well, we actually have six in the fleet, workable, I would say, one, that's the 2017.
Wow, the six.
And the other, the other three are in and out of the shop. We're currently borrowing ambulances from a number of different agencies, LaFern, San Gabriel, San Marino, and we're borrowing them, number of ambulances. So, we, we did, we did our due diligence, and over two years ago, we planned to have two ambulances that should have been here 12 months ago, and then prepared to buy another one since then. Well, those original two, we put in the buy, and you guys approved in August of 2021, still aren't here yet, and we're still hoping for those to get built. We're hoping that was those get built in the next six months or so.
Oh, I'm kind of confused. So, we, 2021, we approved, but now, and it hasn't been, we haven't gotten the new one coming in yet.
That's correct. And in the staff report, we explained that that was already approved through ARPA funds.
And then, now, tonight, we're going to approve another three. And then now, tonight, we're going to approve another three? I'm kind of confused.
Yes, tonight would secure us the ability, if they come available, to have funds readily available to buy potentially three more.
Okay, got it. Because another one that we haven't got, we haven't paid them, but now we want to get the three funding, so, and then we can secure, tell them, build three for us, and also we can, hopefully within 12 months, we can get this maybe first or maybe get three altogether?
Yes, so this, what it says in the staff report, it says that, hey, there's one ready to be built right now on the line. If we get approved tonight, tomorrow morning, we're going to put a purchaser together, tell them, build it now, we want it, we hopefully get it by August, September. That's the plan. Then, there's two chassis that all the work we've been doing as a team, finding ambulances, chassis, everywhere in the United States, calling everybody, dealerships in Florida, New York, everywhere. I've, I wrote letters to Dodge myself, asking them for help, the president of Dodge, and we were able to find two chassis in Texas. They're not ours, because we don't have approval to purchase them yet, but with, uh, waiting for tonight, if we get approval, we can get in line, which may be 12 to 14 months, because there's other agencies throughout the United States are also in line and waiting for their chassis. So if our chassis, we can buy them tomorrow, and they're ready to go, with the one ambulance that's ready to go for us, that, that's ready to be produced, those other two can get in line very shortly. And hopefully, they may come right away too, but I don't want to promise that.
Understood. So basically, each one costs $352,000?
Give or take, yes.
Yes, so in the roughly, we want tonight to approve three of this new ambulance?
We want to approve one for sure, and the ability, if the other two are able to be built for us, we have that money to say yes, or if those two don't.
But, but we need how many? We need three.
We need five. We need five more with our schedule we have. You look in your packet, it shows that our vehicles are beyond.
But we have one or two still workable, but now we can, if we can secure the three, so hopefully we can get three in within 12 months.
That's the plan.
That's the plan, right? And the city manager, are we going to, where's the funding? Do we have funding? There's a million dollars? We, you do, okay, and where is this funding coming from?
If you look in, in the staff report.
I understand, but it's for the consumption, for the audience. I think it's for the COVID-19 federal assistance plan, right? Was this fund?
Yes, some of it is. We had, we had already.
Mayor, if I may, I, I don't want to quote the wrong fund, and our finance director's here and ready to speak to council, so may I have Stephanie come up and answer that question?
Oh, yes.
Sure.
Much better, okay. Finance director.
Yes, for this item, we're proposing to use all special revenue funds. So there's the fire facilities development impact fees, which is one source, which we use for their equipment, but for the ambulances, we're proposing to reallocate funding that was for a, what I called our placeholder project in the ARPA fund for fire station repairs, because we can't spend 100% of that on the fire station repairs, but the ambulances do serve a purpose for COVID-19, so they fall into that category in which we need to use the most of that funding. And so we're proposing to reallocate from the ARPA funds.
I, I have a suggestion. We have a commissioner work for FEMA, okay, and I know FEMA, they will give us the grant by May 15 or something for anything we use, okay, for COVID-19 service over time, and including equipment. So maybe can we look into some funding so we can maybe pay for some of the firefighters over time, and, and the ambulance? Is that possible? Can we look into it?
We can definitely look at other sources that may be available.
Yeah, and that is the FEMA, okay, plan. That's what I got from, okay, and the commissioner Gutierrez, okay, since he worked for them, and then, then he said has a lot of funding for the COVID-19, okay, service, and I don't want, we don't want to miss any potential chance to get money coming in to pay for our budget. Yes, chief, you want to say something?
So the fire department doesn't miss out on any grants out there. We're hitting the streets every day. We go to every single meeting within the region, try to find every dollar. We've asked for grants for $1,900. We've.
Yeah.
When it comes to that COVID-19 money, you want to receive the ARPA funds, the money that is speaking there, you had to have it in by May 15 for funds that you've already expended. We've already, we've already put in our request for the funds.
FEMA, right?
We've already initial requested that.
Thank you, good job, okay, yes.
We can't ask for extra money, saying, hey, and COVID, FEMA money for, to buy another ambulance. That's not possible. What that money is right there is FEMA reimbursement for what we spent, and we've already, we've already put into the system all the money we spent.
Okay.
For our vaccinations and our extra ambulance.
So, so tonight, we're going to approve the three ambulance budget, okay? Hopefully we approve this, and you can get the first one coming in, the brand-new ambulance, and then we using the, the, the fund is now from general fund. Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Contos?
I just have a question from a procurement standpoint, and I don't know if it's Director Sakima or if it's Chief Capelli, but we are suspending our, our typical process of seeking bids, because it's, obviously it's an emergency, but I'm just wondering, is there a reason why we didn't part, prepare for this previously in light of the, the, the fleet already not being in, at the best condition? Because I keep feeling as if, if we were to engage in a bidding process, we could have the, the same quality ambulances at a lower price without having to, to suspend a bidding process, because when you have bids, you can have people compete. Different entities compete, so we could get the best, best quality ambulance for the lowest price. So why is it that we have gotten to the point now where we have an emergency, where we have to do this, but then yet, if we had prepared ahead of time, we would have been able to possibly get these ambulances far lower than the cost we're getting now? I mean, that we're offering to pay now.
Councilman Contos, a good question. So we did, we did prepare in advance, and we did go through the process, and we are using cooperative grant process, government cooperative bidding for that. So we are using the prices, we are getting the good prices that everybody else would have got. We're not paying anything more. Right now, agencies are paying top dollar to buy them wherever they are, and going through that process, they're not waiting for it. There's, is a, there is not a available amount of ambulances anywhere in the United States. Everybody is having this problem. So we did use, use the cooperatives that are out there and getting the best price that are out there, like Sourcewell. We are using those. And we did prepare in advance, like we came here in August 21, and we would have been coming back in the next year or two, it just, we don't know when it's going to happen, and we're, we're foreseeing the future. That's why we're here telling you that, hey, we know in the next 12 to 14 months, we're going to need more, and we're seeing that, hey, these chassis are available now, let's jump on it now, and let's prepare for it now. So we're doing exactly what you're asking, Councilman Contos, right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. Move the motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado for item number nine, consideration of procurement of fire department equipment. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, now we move on to item number 10, consideration of appointments to the audit committee. Mr. City Manager, who will present the report?
I will. I can do it.
We're going to ask the assistant city clerk. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have current three vacancies on the audit committee, and in your weekly notifications, you were provided with applications. Two members currently on the committee who are up for vacancies did submit their applications. Once again, that was council, excuse me, that was Audit Committee member, Mr. Grivich, and Committee member, Marsha Solario. You were provided with the applications to look through for the other vacancy. So at this time, if there is somebody that you would like to nominate for this committee, we can take that.
Um, yes, I would like to nominate Deanna Stanley for the third one, if nobody opposes. Do I need a?
We would need a motion for all three positions, I believe.
Move the motion.
We can take it at once. We can take it at once.
I move the motion. Councilman Wu, second.
Second. So I have a motion to appoint Mr. Grivich, Ms. Solario, and Ms. Stan, Stanley.
Stanley.
To the Audit Committee with a motion by Mayor Diaz and a second by Councilman Wu. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to item number 11, proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 operating and capital improvements. Mr. City Manager, who will present that report?
Good evening, Mayor. Our finance director, Stephanie Sikama, is prepared to make a report tonight. There's three items being recommended. First, that you receive and file the budget. Secondly, that you direct that it be broadly publicly disseminated, including at the community public budget workshops that we mentioned in the manager's report, giving the dates of May 26 and May 1. And then finally, that your action be to schedule it for consideration for the June 6 meeting. And we have a report ready if you would like one. It's up to you.
Would you like to hear a report? Counsel?
I'm okay, but up to you.
Do we want to hear?
Do you want to go through the?
Want to hear the report?
Would you like to have a report regarding the budget? We're asking that you receive and file, direct that we hold the workshops, and.
I mean, I'll personally wait till after.
Adoption on the sixth.
Wouldn't that be so and sweet? There's no such thing.
No. Did you see the binder? You have this binder on top of this.
So we can accept and receive.
Okay, and maybe nobody want to listen to the, the presentation? It's going to be half hours?
Yes, sir.
Oh, my God, you scared me.
I can just move to receive and file and wait till the community meetings and everything comes to play.
Come for that?
Good with me.
Major policy. I, I just have a quick question, okay? Okay, I'm sorry, okay?
It's okay.
Okay.
Councilman Wu.
Do my job.
Go ahead.
Yes, okay. And I know we have $80 million of income, and we have a 66.5, or this projection of expenditure, right? And I, I read the, your report. So we have roughly $20 million of fund balance. But as, as I remember, we should be fund balance should be more than that, 25. I know the projection. Are we spending more money? That's why our fund balance to $20 million. And I, I hope we can hit $30 million of fund balance. Yeah, go ahead.
To hit 30 million? I'm not sure if that's possible in the next couple of years with the recession pending, but yes.
I know, I'm dreaming.
Due to the incoming recession, revenues are projected to be less specifically in sales tax and in our licenses and permisses, which have been our biggest revenue sources the last few years.
Which one? What, what is the, the big, okay, income?
Sales tax and licenses and permisses. We had a huge boom in construction. Well, we don't anticipate that to continue in the next year, so we've reduced those revenue as well. And so that's why you see a slight decrease to 20 million. Please keep in mind that each year when, after we do our annual financial reports, the excess fund balance gets moved into other uses that are approved by council. So that's why you see a shift down into your fund balance from the general fund. It doesn't mean that we're necessarily spending that money. However, we are reallocating that money towards capital assets, equipment replacement, and pension obligations, or other post-employment benefit obligations.
Okay, and my question, okay, if you see our, okay, because property tax is about 24.5%, and sales tax about 23% of our general fund income, and, but the property tax should be increased, because just the face church, now finally, this property sold for $54 million, and we, we get 14% of that tax revenue, and before, we don't have. And plus, okay, and, okay, we have the property built 400, currently 400 property, they sell like hot cookies. So, so all this property tax, 14% will come to the city. So our, our tax basis should be increased rather than decreased. And another thing regarding the sales tax, finally, we receive, okay, the West Covina Plaza, Plaza West Covina, they, they started September last year, they started paying our sales tax after 20 years of, okay, we develop agency for them to build, we haven't received nothing, but finally, we receive the income. So I think all this is, we don't have before, now it going to come to us. So that's why I'm thinking about income should be increased rather than decreased.
So in the general fund, property tax is estimated to be increased, sales taxes estimated to actually be decreased based on our estimates that we receive from HDL. Please keep in mind that we already receive a portion of the sales tax from the CFD over the years, and this year, we anticipated to receive the rest of it for the whole year, starting in September. So there was really only one quarter where the city wouldn't receive the sales tax this year. So we're basing it off of that, taking that into account.
Got it, okay. And, and, but another projection of what I see is the dealership, the dealership, we have Tesla coming in, and we have our, okay, Toyota moving into the much bigger place, onto the Nissan side. So all this going to, I think, because dealership is a major sales tax to our revenue, and I think they will automatically, I think, invasion dealership currently is a pretty high level in the nationwide, as their survey, they are doing pretty good. And they, in West Covina, it's on the automotive magazine showing the invasion is currently number one, a new dealership in West Covina. So meaning that is a good, okay, income resource to, to, to us.
And we did share that information with HDL, so they could take that into account into their projections.
Okay, very good. So, so the, the reason I'll bring this up is because we using 77% of our public safety. So if we can increase our revenue, then this 77% should be decreased. So in that way, we, we should have a little bit more breathing room, okay, and to including all the capital improvement and all the project with, again, to increase the, our resource and revenue. Make, make sense to you?
I'm not sure. Was there a question?
The, the question is, if we are using currently 77% based on our income, a general plan, so if we can increase our resource revenue coming in, then this automatic 77% should be decreased. Am I right?
Are you talking about the fund balance, 77%?
Yes, correct, correct.
The fund balance would go up. You are correct.
So in that way, fund balance will, will go up, and hopefully, okay, 77%. The point is this, because we spend a lot of money to public safety, and how can we reduce, okay, this percentage to a certain of a desirable percentage? Am I right? Do I make sense to you?
I, I believe you're saying that you would like to reduce the amount you're expending on public safety?
No, I'm saying if we.
Proportionally?
No, if we have more income, and we have expenditure, by income increase, expenditure stay the same, okay, then hopefully, in that way, this percentage will be reduced. Am I right, City Manager?
Let me try and answer it from my perspective. The city has made really good progress in terms of having as general fund reserves, the amount per the city council's adopted budget policy. That predates, I think, almost everybody on this council. If we get found revenue, if we get additional revenue, especially sales tax, then all those numbers.
And all those income.
Get better. But until we receive that revenue, I don't think we're prepared to budget for it.
I understand. I'm just saying this is projection.
Yes, sir.
A projection, okay, I'm a projection too. I'm a projected, if we have more income, okay, and if our expenditure stay what we have, and if we have a more, increasing our revenue, just like all the city, they increase their revenue, then they have money to, to do development or to do program, the capital improvement, like fix up our city hall, okay, and this need money. But we need to have a resource, okay, because we want to emphasize our public safety will be number one to take our, okay, general, general fund. Make sense? Okay, and so if we can increase our income, so in that way, what I'm saying is that then there will be proportionally, the, the, the public safety portion will be smaller due to we have a higher income coming in. That is my point.
I understand.
Okay, and then, of course, then with that, we have more fund balance, or we can using that money maybe to update our city hall and compliance with a lot of, okay, we, this building is beautiful, but it just needs some tender loving care.
I've got a lot of buildings that aren't just.
I know.
Roofs.
I know.
You name it.
I know, I know, the roof problem, this problem. So, so hopefully, we can increase more of revenue, okay, and in that way, we can fix up a lot of our city property, including all those communities, okay, facility. Anyway, and I'm done. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Then we move the motion.
I have a motion. I just need a second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado and a second by Mayor Diaz to receive and file, item number 11. Which is the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 operating and capital improvement program budget. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
May, Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0.
Okay. Do we have any requests? Council requests? Do we have any requests? Council requests?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Contos?
I have a few, but I promise I won't take that long.
Okay.
I promise.
Yes, I guess I do want.
Well, I I just wanted to to ask, in light of there being a number of, you know, we're working on increased community engagement, if there if it's, I guess it would be a mother may I to to see about the possibility of of establishing a line item for us to have district meetings. I know we've been doing them more lately, but more, you know, in support of of all of of my colleagues, if we have a budget within which to work, I wanted to make sure that that we we have something to work with, so that that way we can know what our parameters are, what we can do, what we can't do. So that way, we don't end up spending more than we than we need to, et cetera. But I mean, with by having a budget, we'd be able to have an idea what's possible. So I mean, because without a line item, then it's tough to know if we're if we're spending too much or not, or if we have more more room, that sort of thing. So that's just a my first general request.
Okay, we have a.
I'll support you. Second.
Sure. Okay.
And then second, by by, I wanted to follow up on a contract that that all five of us received with regard to maintenance. I'm going to ask if 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 staff can provide detailed a detailed report as to the status of implementing the provisions of the contract with relating, because we were talking before, I previously talked about Caltrans and the area around the freeway, that sort of thing. So wanted to look into things that haven't been done, let's say with lighting and vegetation and weeds that are being killed but not not cut, that sort of thing. So I can provide further and further detail by email, but essentially, my mother may I here entails asking for a detailed report to make sure that that we're implementing the provisions of the contract effectively. Because I'm I worry that with various contracts, if if there isn't follow through with making sure the provisions are done, then things have fallen to neglect, which we're witnessing around around. So that's why I'm just wondering if 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 we could ask staff to 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 be prepared to give us a detailed update about the contract and its implementation.
So like a status report from Brightview?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, if I may, Mayor.
Sure.
I understand, Councilman Contos, to be asking that for an agenda item regarding the the Caltrans agreement that was recently shared.
Yes.
And and compliments to Resident Andy McIntyre. That agreement was approved evidently and signed by the Mayor Spence in 2017 or 18.
Right.
And so when I saw that, I was intrigued by it, and it identified a number of city maintenance responsibility areas that I've learned something new every day, so I was grateful that I learned about that. But perhaps we could schedule it as an agenda item so that we could talk about those duties and responsibilities.
And do we have a system for ensuring? I mean, we don't know what else we don't know. So how do we find, how do we make sure that there aren't other contracts like this that are sort of sitting somewhere that haven't been implemented, that we have no idea because of not having that institutional memory among us? Is there a system or approach to ensure that we don't? I mean, I just, I was a little worried by finding that this was enforced, that but none of us knew about it, so.
If I may, one of the analyses that we did in 2019 was we engaged the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. We made application for membership. That first year, they turned us down because we had a number of opportunities to do better. And so they did an initial risk management evaluation report, which was really a solid report that identified 53 different areas where the city needed to adopt best practices and do better. And this contract management was one of those 53 areas. And so I can proud to report that we now have a master list of contracts and that the City Clerk's Office is maintaining those correctly. We're getting evidences of insurance. We're requiring that those contracts be brought to council per policy, et cetera. So I believe those systems are in place. Not to say we won't find more alligators under the carpet as we go along, but hopefully, those are fewer and farther between. I I believe that we've addressed these things and and all of those findings of the IRME, the Initial Risk Management Evaluation.
Good. And are all those contracts being put under the transparency of portion of the of the website?
And they're not on the website.
Not all on the website.
They're not all on the website.
So to the extent that, I mean, how does that normally work for for transparency of contracts? Just if you could explain?
Through the chair, and maybe we could have a agenda item about this. But now, if people make a public records request, we provide them, but we don't necessarily place them all on the website.
I see.
Do you honor the PRA request?
Sure.
And I don't think we've got any contracts that people don't know about or aren't on that master log. But they're not all on the website at the moment.
Just as a thought, in order to to minimize the burden of public records requests, if if material were to be made transparent and just placed online as a matter of course, then that probably would reduce the burden on the Assistant City Clerk, but it's just a general thought.
It's a good suggestion. I'm happy to look into that.
Okay. And the last thing, just wanted to congratulate my colleagues on their award tonight. Gosh, it's great. It's really, really excited about about the recognition they received and just wonderful, wonderful. Just it's it's an exciting thing.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Latif Lottas Viado.
Thank you. I actually have a request. I know on the last conversation, we talked about homeless, and and I did bring up that is there a way to do account that it's the homeless from our our residents? So I'd like the city to look into. I know San Clemente did something where they cleared the homeless campsite, and they require proof of ties to the city for reentry. So I know they they cleared like 70, but only 23 were allowed to come back. And the reason why I'm bringing this more so because, like, I know that we get some homelessness that are dropped off. Remember the time where the white van just literally came, dropped them off, and it wasn't until our resident, you know, saw the pattern and reported it. So we miss a lot. We don't catch all homelessness that are are just dropped off from other cities, because we do have the resources. We have the Social Security Office, we have the DMV, we have others, these resources that are for them. But I want a rule or something where if they drop them off, they gotta take them back where they they came from. And, you know, I just don't want to see an upcoming influx, because I know the Olympics is coming in LA. And if you notice, wherever the Olympics are held, all of a sudden, the homeless area, and it's super clean. And I know LA is like bringing them over and pushing them to the San Gabriel Valley area. So I just want to prevent any influx of other homeless that does not belong to us. I want to make sure we we take care and of our current, as we have our own homeless issues. So I just want to see, to to look into that and and those two things.
Through the chair, just want to clarify kind of where we are. We appreciated getting the article from San Clemente. Chief of Police and I discussed it and had some brief conversation about that particular article on practice with the city attorney. In that case, they were talking about, as I recall, IDing and requiring locals only for people that were returning, or they were attempting to require, make that rule, and require a local identification or something for people that were returning to a homeless encampment. If it were in fact a homeless center or shelter, then the city attorney mentioned he was aware of policies that the council could adopt. But if it's just homeless coming to your town or returning to an encampment somewhere, I'm not sure that rule would apply. It's a legal question. I'm gonna let Tom answer it. But my understanding is that would only apply in the situation if you were running a domicile, a shelter. But it wouldn't it wouldn't apply just if somebody were coming in.
Well, is there a current rule in place if anybody from another city takes them and just leaves them?
I know I know of no rule that's in place if someone drops them off for use of services here and and is required to take them.
Is that something I can, we can implement and make create an ordinance for West Covina?
So so that is something that is common, and cities complain about that. I think the COG would be helpful in that area. We can look to other cities and see what they have done. It certainly would be difficult to police and or enforce, because like you said, sometimes they just come, they drop them off, and they're gone, and they just don't come back. But it's something absolutely we can look into and see if there's any creative way to make sure that if they're dropping them off to use our services, that they're gonna take them back to where they originated from.
Mayor Pro Tim, did you want?
Yeah, I just, I I actually just have some issue, and I'm glad you you brought it up. Currently, in in West Covina, we don't have any shelter beds. Is that correct? Right. So we 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 actually send our homeless to East Los Angeles and to Pasadena. So and from my understanding, if if someone needs drug treatment, is that happening within our borders, or do we also send them out?
Well, I know that they're using the medical services here in West Covina, a lot of the the clinics for a lot of medical issues that it's free. So that that's one of the resources that our city does have.
But but I I guess what I what I'm understanding is, as as a region, we're all kind of in this together, right? So so we we send our homeless, before we sent, used to send them to Pomona, we now send them to Pasadena, we we East LA, we just had a, one of our public comments was about a family we were sending to Lancaster. So, you know, I think, you know, other cities could then say, why is why is West Covina sending them here? And I think also, historically, there used to be laws like this, and this is how sundown towns used to operate, right, where they would check your ID, and if you were not from the city, they they would abuse you. And so if we do look into this, I mean, for one, I just think it sends a bad precedent, but I I think it also opens us up to lawsuits. So if we can be very diligent.
Well, that's why I put in a request to look into it, because I'm trying to create solutions with this. And and like I said, the funding issue really upset me, especially that we pay so much money in taxes, and we get very little. And other cities, like LA, get tons of money and tons of funding. So of course, wherever the funding is, wherever the money is, that's where the resources will traditionally go. So I'm trying to create a solution for something that just it's difficult to see, and that's why I'm putting in this request, to look in all angles.
I I I understand. But I mean, to make a public request like that also gives an appearance of our city. And, you know, we're we're a city that that welcomes people. And I I think also, if if we are going to say then that, you know, if you send people to our city, then they they need to leave, and yet we don't have any shelter beds for our own homeless, you know, I I would I would.
So you would allow them to just drop them off here, like they were kind of doing before? And like I said, I know LA is clearing it, and they're shifting in there. There's a lot of things that they do that it's not known in public. And I personally know, because I obviously I work in LA. So, you know, I hear and I see certain things that is being done. And everybody just quiets down, and then we just see, I just don't want to be the city that gets an influx of this, and then now we have to cater to more, and we get no, like I said, no funding, no, no resource and everything. But this is a request just to look into.
Is this the is this the mother may I?
This is my mother may I request.
Okay, I will second your mother may I.
And we'll and we'll we'll make sure it doesn't expose the city to the liability. We'll make sure we're doing it well within the.
You're just looking toward any solution?
Absolutely.
Some other may I. So I I will support a mother may I to look into any solution.
Councilwoman Lopez.
Just looking at any possibility without any potential lawsuit.
Agree. Yeah, she had asked last time. We did look into a thing. We're looking around, and she provided us with some information.
Thank you.
We'll absolutely look into it and make sure it doesn't expose us to any liability. No, no, no.
We agree.
Yeah, I did. Just, I mean, final comment, the Boise decision is out there. So we do understand how many shelter beds that we need to provide, and then we can then make decisions with our ordinances based on the law. So so there is a mechanism.
And that's why we're in regards to the Boise case, if you get an influx, and then they all stay here, now our homeless numbers goes up, that means we need an increase of bed. So that's the reason why I wanted to make sure that this.
Some of our other clients, a couple of our cities already use this criteria of if they have some sort of attachment to the city.
Is your mic on?
Yes, they if they, I'm trying to slide across.
Okay.
But if they went to high school here, if they have family here, if they had a job.
The ties, yeah.
There's ties to the city, you do give them, I guess, priority.
Priority.
For services, right. That that's okay to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, if we're done, this meeting is adjourned.